I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart. Minutes of the previous meeting. The motion is second to approve minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? None on paper, will I say aye?
Aye.
Close same time. Motion carries. Approval of the bills. Questions?
Motion to approve.
The motion is second to approve the bill. Further discussion.
One of those was for the drowning on Ramsey County.
Is that the additional list?
Yeah, with the additional list, correct?
Yes.
And the additional list is...
Yeah.
He shares your report, Eleanor?
Uh... Yeah, the transport one was in the margin. Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Brown?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of the financial reports. You didn't know you were ordinary? I didn't see it either.
No, we're just gonna have to watch the... I would see.
Uh, which one is this? Probably the most important bill by now.
So that's probably the... Is that the highest month you've ever seen?
Last month. Highest month you've ever seen.
You said the wrong number.
No, we're going around. We know it all the time.
Yeah. Six plus medical, so 110, plus the note of the entry was another 11. Okay?
I didn't know what part of the budget I pulled up the grass a time ago.
Come on, Tim.
Okay?
I'm moving to approve the financials.
Okay, sorry. We have a motion in a second to approve the financials. Further discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Lakeview?
Aye. Motion carries. Treasurer's checks. Too big, exciting.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second to approve the treasurer's checks. Further discussion. Seeing none, all paper will I say aye?
Aye.
Close same time. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. I have one thing to add. Would it be okay if we add Karen Neckin to discuss the Lakeview Community Shelter?
Absolutely.
And then I also like to add the discussion on the Heritage Center. What should I add?
Okay. Let's put those down.
Moving to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the agenda as amended. Further discussion. Seeing none, all paper will I say aye?
Aye.
Close same time. Motion carries. Agenda is set. First off, Krista.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A couple things to note. The state came out, the Department of Emergency Services came out with a new funding formula for the grant that I did receive. They had us, emergency managers, vote on a 33-33-33 split over the next two years, or a 50%, 20%, 30% split, which was based on the allocations that we had been receiving, the population, and then essentially a checklist that we each have to follow each year, things that we need to get done. The difference for us is our population is, you know, significantly smaller than the big four areas, so we would have received less dollars. So I did choose to go with the 50-20-30% split. It kept us even par with what I received last year for ENPG funding dollars. And then next year, for the 2019 fiscal year, it did increase about $1,000, $1,300. So I chose that just because we wouldn't go down in reimbursement for what we had been receiving every time. So I did that, just so you know. The state is choosing to go with essentially the most votes for the different split. I believe it will come at 50-20-30%, but I just wanted you guys to be aware of that. Another thing is I will be gone for four days at the end of the month for my annual conference. And another question I had, I kinda wanted to get your opinion. We had done some active shooter training a few weeks ago, which was well received by everyone that was able to be there, which would be most of the courthouse employees. I did talk to Officer Chad England afterward, which he did attend the training as well, Kim Sartre. I'm doing a full-scale exercise for the courthouse. And he did mention that it is better when public is not here. He mentioned, you know, maybe doing some kind of a drill or something on a Saturday. And I mentioned how that would be hard because we wouldn't have the employees to then, to be able to work with that. So my question to you is, would you be opposed to closing the courthouse an hour to 30 minutes early one day when we decide to do this exercise? Having the employees still here, uh, closing at like 4:00 PM to the public?
Announce that to the public?
I absolutely would. I don't have a date yet on that. I'm still in the works in discussion. I just wanted to get your opinion and thoughts on doing that.
My inclination is that if we want to make sure we have a good drill, that if that's gonna make the drill better, I don't foresee why not. That's a problem for one hour.
Okay.
Do you conduct a drill in, or somebody comes in?
No, we will, between myself and the police department, sheriff's department. We'll do it locally here. I won't hire any outside other sources. However, I do have a refund grant that I was approved for for about, I think it was $20,000 or $25,000. So I had to wiggle, 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 play with that to be able to make it a really good event.
Just make sure you're...
Yeah, absolutely.
We don't want anybody walking in unactively.
That's what I was wanting to avoid.
Want to be a guest?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, Krista?
That's it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any questions for Krista? Very good. Go ahead. Motion and set the date or later date? Would that be all right with you, Commissioner, if we had a motion to approve? We have a motion in a second to allow early closure of the courthouse. Right now we're gonna cover for active shooter. Further discussion. Seeing none, all paper will I say aye?
Aye.
All right. Close same time. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Stacy?
Good morning. We're extremely busy here as of late. We're gonna... We've seen 100-plus people again last month, so we're keeping that average up over 100, so that keeps me jumping all the time. Just wanted to mention the 27th of this month, the local chapter, the DAB, will be hosting a meeting for the local state legislators to discuss veterans' issues on a state level. I've been at the VFW on the 27th. Yep. 27th of August.
Who are you anticipating?
Dave Elke and Dennis Johnson already replied that they would make it. I don't know that Mr. Westland has been informed, but I'm sure he has, but haven't heard back that he's coming. Just to, we'll probably more educate them on what veterans expect from the state or would like to see from the state. So we got that coming up.
You're just gonna have local veterans there then, or you're gonna have some state?
Oh yeah, we got our local, no, our, just our, our local chapter. Anybody else catches within, you know, every veteran is invited, so.
Yep.
That's all I got.
That's all you know. Any questions for Stacy? Anything done? Thanks, Stacy. Yep. Mr. King?
Yeah.
Party time.
Yeah. There was, since you got that report, we had one change. WIC got more money in than we expected. So when we have the final hearing in October, that'll be changed on there. It actually went up, so... But it doesn't affect, it's a kind of flow through. It comes in and goes out. So it didn't really affect the mill levy, is what you're interested in, I'm sure. And for Ramsey County, there was an increase of $31,492 for 2019. Do you have any specific questions on any revenue or expenses or...
Your revenue from the state aid?
Yep, is down.
Is down.
Is down, yep. How much? 10%.
1%?
It's the first time in a long, 30-some years that it's actually gone down, because that's, that's basically our foundation that we build on. With all the colonies combined with no levies, we get about $587,455, which is about 33% of our, of our total budget. The rest comes from the 118 from state aid and then grants that we apply for. And our total budget is a million eight, so it, and grants are becoming harder to get, but we still keep plugging away and...
How much are you gonna take the colonies up then?
What's that?
How much are you gonna take the colonies up?
For Ramsey, it was $31,492 from last year.
Well, the rest of the colonies, what are they saying?
Well, Benson is up 24, and Eddie is up about 85, and Pierce is up about 12.6.
What are they saying?
What's that? They've...
Do we have objections?
No, Pierce and Benson have already approved. I go to Eddie here right after I get out of here.
They had no objections?
No, nope.
Do we have any further questions for...
Have you talked to our local legislators? Why this one up $31,000?
Our local legislators? Basically, I've told, talked to, talked to them about the decrease in state aid and, and things like that, and other grant opportunities through the state.
I'm sure, we're well aware. State aid goes down, who gets to catch the ball?
Exactly. That's the...
Should we get our state legislators in here and explain some of this to us? I'd like to hear it.
I would, I would love to hear that too, but...
If they're going to the vets' club and talking to the vets?
We hope to have them here...
We should talk about district health also.
Sure. We, we hope to have them for a public health type education thing here sometime. It has not been set up. Our tobacco person is working on that, because there's some increase in tobacco tax that they'd like to see happen this year, and so... But we can sure let you know when that takes place.
Alan, how many of your services are mandated by state or federal?
Quite a few. We were just instructed by the state health officer that when, when they said, "You will be getting a cut, and, but you will maintain these services." And so that has been a deal across the board. I'm sure I'm not the only one that they're doing that to. It's, yeah, you... We don't have a lot of choice in some of the situations, and so we, what we do is hustle and try and get more grants to cover the things that our local people want us doing. The, so far, we've, we've hung in there pretty, pretty good, but again, the, the amount of our grants, instead of, you know, being $100,000, they're now 50, or 25, or 10. A lot of the grants I'm not able to apply for because we, they, they've put this sort of, only places like 250,000 people or more can apply. We know, we have about 10 to that in our four counties, about 25,000. So they want more bang for their buck, more people involved, and so I can't even apply for those grants. It makes it difficult, you know, so... But we have a very good staff. They're dedicated. They work hard, so it's, we're very lucky. Plus, we're up on second floor with, with, you know, social services, which they come there, the people come, and it's kind of a one-stop shop. They go to social services, they come to public health, and so that they don't have to be running all over the place. It is very nice for the public. And if they have questions about either, we refer, both agencies refer back and forth very well. And so that, that is a plus there. Any other questions?
Well, one more comment. I wasn't aware of $31,000 increase in our share of the budget from Ramsey County until this morning.
Well, I...
Was any other commissioner aware?
Our, Mr. Wakefield was very aware. He, he's on the board.
Okay.
He passed it, and Alondo Norwood...
No, I'm not sticking on Wakefield at all.
Okay. He, he's on the board, and he had questions, and so did Alondo. They, they look at it very closely. And so first it's approved by the board, then I go to each county and...
Yeah, no, I'm not blaming you either.
Or Norwood.
I want to get the people in front of me that I can go after, and that's the state legislator. I'm probably picking on him this morning, yeah, I am, but... We get a $31,000 increase in a state, you know, a local health...
Sure, sure.
And a lot of the services are mandated by the state.
Yeah, well, what else is there?
Right.
Exactly.
We're looking at law enforcement increase there of, seems like last year our budget was running around 80, wasn't it? Our monthly payment somewhere in there?
Yeah, probably.
Gendage? Now we're, like, a finished year averaging a hundred, you know, and if you got all the colonies.
Yeah. Local public health hasn't, we don't have much direct access to legislative, because our budget comes through the state health department. So we don't have as direct access, you know, we have to...
No, you don't.
No, but you...
Our legislators do. They're pretty close to the health department down there.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, yeah.
I guess my point is, what was the day on that vets' club meeting? 27th? At what time?
Seven.
I don't know. When we get done with today, we might have to dig a whole day with them, huh?
It's up to you. We might have to have, you know, one of our meetings like we've had before, before they go to legislative session and kind of give them the old heads up, this is what we're looking for from the coming perspective.
It's just you, when we're trying to get our budget together, and then we see all kinds of increases. And it's gonna fall on the tax payers of Ramsey County.
Well, what's our, what's our maximum mill levy for public health?
Five mils.
Five mils?
Yeah.
So we're probably below 4.25?
Yeah.
Alan's on it.
We should schedule an individual, if you're scared to move here.
Any other questions? Any questions for all, I should say, on this discussion? Seeing none, thank you, all.
Okay. The phone conference call is, will be October 2nd. And right away at 8:30 in the morning, and that will include all four counties. And that will be the, the final approval of the budget.
Okay, so very good.
Very good, thank you.
Roger? That's all the carpet we've been getting. I figured you might as well get a carpet cleaner. It'll be cheaper in the long run than having service trucks coming in all the time. So I checked out a couple different ones. I believe you guys have paperwork and amounts on them. There's one, a Clark, that was $2,517, and a Nobles, that was $3,000. The two are fairly comparable in size, cleaning path, but the Nobles, which was $500 more, actually worked a lot better because it was lower in height, and it can get right underneath the workstations, pretty much to the wall, where the Clark is taller, it's just the way they're built. And so I'd like to get the Nobles. And I said that one was $3,000 as opposed to the $2,500 plus for the Clark.
That's what we've had before?
We've never had a carpet cleaner before.
Never had it before. You think the Noble worked as well?
Yeah.
I move to approve.
Sorry.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve Roger Bynum and Nobles perfectly. Further discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Brett?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lakeview?
Aye. Motion carries. I was even, yeah. Hey, Roger.
Do we have to wait till 8:30, 9:30? It's not a public hearing?
No. I just, I just...
Yeah, it was just, just the date that they did. Okay, well, we'll go on and run, and Bill.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, thanks for inviting me. I appreciate the opportunity. It's great to visit with you guys. As you know, Brenda Langrue has retired after multiple years of good service to the county. And typically, what we do with the next steps is we have a meeting with the counties to look at refilling those positions. We, an extension, we've always been committed to the county-based model, having an extension agent in every county. That position was reaffirmed over the last year and a half when we had the ESPAR internal review. That was reaffirmed, so we continue to do that as well. And in situations you guys have, any, and I can have your resources, Agent, and Bill Modus, who's also does great work in the county. So when we look at going beyond that in a county, such as Brenda's position was a family and community wellness position, we look at the priorities and needs in the counties, you know, the, the population, the geographic size, the needs, the diversity. And when we look at all those factors from our position, that FCW agent position that Brenda held is also a priority for us. So as a partnership with the counties, I guess my first question for you is, do you have questions about that position that I can answer, or, and is, is it a priority for you as well to continue that type of position at the county?
I think it would be, you know, it fills a great need within our community, you know. As you mentioned, what Brenda's services were, you know, we, we have those type of populations within our community, and she served well.
There's a huge need. And, and Bill was just, I don't know if he brought those numbers, but he just showed me some of the 4-H numbers as well. That's another big part of that role. Those numbers have, you know, you're in the hundreds for members, and 70s or 60s for volunteers. I mean, so there's, I mean, there's definitely needs that are, that are met, are being met, that continue to be met, that need to continue to be met, and there's support, you know, from the folks in the county as well.
There's no question that Mary wants it, I know that, so. No question whatsoever with you. 4-H numbers, how many is there? You got a total?
Yeah, we got 130, I don't remember what, 131 total 4-H members, as per saying. We got 184 shooting sports, so 310, 20.
That's a lot of youth for helping.
We're in the same packs.
Yeah, it's a must. How long do you think you can take, get something on that?
Okay, that was gonna be, that's the next step here. You know, first of all, we want to make sure you're in support. I assume that, and I appreciate that. I'll put in my two cents, I'm absolutely for it 100%. I know there's interesting blind work already out there. I've been contacted by many individuals. So the next steps, typically, you know, we've usually moved, you know, as soon as there's an opening, we get the permission from the partner in the county, we start the process of recruitment. However, as you guys are well aware, we're all in tighter budgets right now with the last legislative session. We had that 14% cut. We have more open positions than we have dollars to refill right now. Like I said, this is a very high priority position, so it's at the top of that list. So one of the things we have to do is take a look at our budgeting. And when these positions, someone resigns or retires, there's usually payout for their vacation and their sick leave. And in this situation, Brenda had about a month's worth of salary, and we, we have not, and we will not come to the counties to ask for that. We pay that whole bill ourselves through NDSU Extension. So basically, that's almost like two months of salary, because we have the 50-50 sharing of it right now. So right now, we want to at least wait a couple months, you know, somewhere in there, to recover some of that salary savings from that payout, which would mean if, if all comes to fruition, I mean, like I said, this is a high priority position. You know, we might start, let's see, what is it now, August, September, October, we might start in, you know, late October, November with recruitment and have a position in place in January, February, March, April, depending on how that process all goes. Does that kind of get to your question?
Yeah, kind of.
Well, we should be sooner, but... You know, and here I can, I will, one other thing I wanted to talk about, that's a perfect, perfect segue for that. I have a, let's see what it is here. Two more here. Like I said, the budget situation is, you know, we're all tight, and what I'm passing out here is the NDSU Extension Program Initiative. What these are, these are the final rankings from the ESPAR, the State Board of Ag Research and Education Process. ESPAR, they're the, they're the body that carries our, our asks or our needs to the state legislature. They have the public hearings every year, and they rank the priorities. And in coming into the next legislative session, we have two, two very simple priorities to ask for the legislature. One of them is extension weather, digital delivery, and that one came out of our ESPAR review. I mean, we always knew that we needed to upgrade our web presence, because it's kind of, it's all over the place. We need to focus in on that. So that's a small, that's an ask of like $345,000 one time from the state. That, you know, that's pretty small. The other priority, which affects this process of refilling as well as your county, is to get back some of our operational support. In that last legislative session, we took a 14% cut. And through that process, we also, in the ESPAR internal review, we looked at the partnership with the counties, and we went from the 50-50 to the 40-60 full compensation, which increased your costs slightly. So what we're asking, what ESPAR is presenting to the legislature, is this an increase in operational support of $870,000, which $670,000 would go directly to offset the monies that were cut to support our county physicians, county agency. And if we get that dollars back, that 40-60 would probably go to a 35-65, so you guys would be back to the same dollar commitment that you were in the past. The reason I'm giving this to you is, if you know legislators, or if you know people that want to talk to legislators, this is a message that needs to be carried forth, and I'm not, you know, that's not our role, I mean...
You should have had him here this morning.
Yes, yes, so I know. We're not the only ones.
Make the listeners...
About a month ago.
Maybe they're watching, huh?
I was at a regional, I was at a regional, one of the Association of Counties Regional Meeting down in the south, East Carolina State. There were five counties, there were, no legislator showed up, and I kind of know why, because they, they were not, got a little high, losing some height. But anyway, so this is part of that reason, you know, we had that, we lost that money, we need to get it back. Because there's support. Through that ESPAR internal review, we have, you know, we have, ESPAR got hundreds of letters. They have people coming to their hearings testifying in support of extension. They want their county agents, they want more. They want more extension, not less. So we need to carry that, you know, that message needs to get carried through. So we need to carry that, you know, that message needs to get carried through to the legislature. So if you or if you know people that are willing to take that message, you know, that's not a lot of money. You know, we're, to help the county, about six hundred and seventy thousand, that's not a lot of money at all. So, so that's, that helps explain a little bit as well where we're at.
Well, I know where you're at.
Typically, I would be coming in here and say, if you guys support it, we start the recruitment tomorrow. But we are, we gotta kind of take our time a little bit here.
Well, I think it's a good time to put a little pressure on our legislators, you know. Think I'm aware that when we may go back there in January, they take care of something. We just talked about Health Department going up thirty-one thousand for the county share on the budget and the Vets Office.
This stuff isn't going where?
They're gonna have a meeting at the local Vets Office here the twenty-seventh. You want to come up there? I would buy the encouragement in hot water, so. But I mean, yeah, we gotta remind our legislators and our state government, you know, that.
There's needs.
They kind of threw it back on the counties the last two years and now it's.
Exactly.
Time to them to step up.
I agree.
And like you said, it's a matter of, people don't want less extension, they want more.
I know, every, I mean, it's a good service. Almost every county I've worked with, I've worked with twenty counties, they're all like, you know, I wish we had more. And I'm like, well, you tell your legislators not, you know, I would give you more if I had the money.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at from the standpoint of, yeah, we wish we could fill it tomorrow, but I think you just need to be happy at this point, we're gonna, we got a commitment to get it filled and it's gonna take a little while, but it'll be filled.
Yeah. Yeah, from, yeah, this is an easy one because, I mean, it's not easy because it's gotta take a little time, but it's, there's no question, it's a very high priority for us as well as for you. So it's at, it's at the top of our, very top couple of positions.
I think that was the main concern, that we were gonna, you know, linger for a while and not help her get it filled.
Well, yeah, six months or so, I hope that's not, I mean, that's a while, but that's not like, you know, yet.
Can I vote a lot if it's gonna be all right for six months or so?
Well, it's gonna be different and it already showed up yesterday. The young lady commented to have her pressure cooker tested and Sarah and I don't know, we're not trained, we don't know how. Because Brenda's done that, you know, that's a big deal, but we probably get thirty to forty of them a year, but.
You do?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
It's a huge food safety issue.
Nobody else is not gonna do it anymore.
Well, we, Brenda had the expertise and knowledge to do that.
Everybody in town knew to come to Brenda.
Yeah, yeah. And that's just one example. I mean, we'll make it work, but it's gonna be different.
And usually what we do in the interim is, if there are, you know, that's a, that's a tough one to deal with with a neighboring agent, but if there's something that really needs to be done, you know, Bill can call one of the neighboring FCW agents, hey, can you help us out here? We don't want to lean on them too much because, you know, then we're taking them away from their county. But, you know, we're kind of a family, we try to cover in some of these interim openings, so.
Yeah, it'll be, I think too, just to be reminded that Ron said, when it comes to hiring process, it seems like once the person is actually in an operative position, the paperwork department just plain takes time. It's not something that gets done in a week.
You know how HR stuff is.
I guess one other question or thought or not question, but just thought and for you guys to think about. Typically, when it comes time to do this refill, we usually ask at least one commissioner to be on the search committee with helping interview process. So I don't care which one, I know you guys have a portfolio holder or who it is, but to think about when the time comes, I'll come back and ask to get a commitment from somebody here to help with that. And then we'll get other members of the community as well on that search committee.
Ron, these are really some impressive numbers, this web and digital delivery. Given the population of our state.
Yes.
And, yeah, that's, that's impressive.
Yeah, not only the web and digital stuff, yeah, three million people use, I mean, people use that stuff all the time. That's why we gotta get it more user-friendly.
Right.
And, but if you just look at our, last year, our individual face-to-face direct contacts was a little over a million.
And, you know, we don't have any, so, so, I mean, people use extension.
I just go to the state fair and they'll see it.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
I was up there three times. Well, every time, like, different people, different kids, from all over the state going. It's really impressive, you know, and putting the shoulder to the arm. The learning of getting a kid.
Well, that's the key, it's the life skills, you know, we're not just, you know, it's not just about winning a ribbon, it's all the other. How you take care of this, how you build the project or how you, you know, keeping the records and.
Time management.
Time management.
It goes into a dedication.
Yes.
The leaders, all their leadership.
Although that's, you know, without the leaders, I don't know if anybody here is a 4H leader, but thank you very much. I mean, because that's tremendous, the, the.
Can't thank them enough.
Yes. 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 But it's a, it's a commitment to the future, it's the youth. You know, I always, people sometimes ask, you know, what's the value in some of that? Well, you know, it's hard to put a dollar value on it, but if you look at 4H, if you're familiar with the juvenile justice system and the cost of that, I would bet there's not very many 4H kids that have to go through the juvenile justice system. You know? So what's the value in that, you know?
Very few. Another thing, I was up at Botno, they're there for, and I was at Carrington also. Just completely involvement from the local community and, you know, this, you know, people there, a lot of, a lot of crowds.
You bring up a, you bring up a little bit of a spot there. Botno is, their FCW agent has been, they've been vacant for almost a year and a half.
Really?
So that's where I'm kind of like, okay, is it Ramsey or is it Botno? That's where. And they got needs up there too.
And they want them.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, the county has been, they, they budgeted for it and they, yes. So.
I was really impressed with their fair that night.
Yeah. Yes, yes, they have one, they have, Sarah Plemmons is ANR agent, she's been working her tail off to deal with all that stuff. Because that's a big county too. And the next year reservation, similar, a lot of diversity, a lot of needs, just like Ramsey.
A lot of livestock.
Yes, yes, you got the turtle moms and some not as productive crop lands, so it's pasture, really a pasture.
A lot of livestock. Completely done.
Any other?
Yeah, any further questions for Ron?
If you have, if you think of something, get ahold of Bill and I can, or just call, just get ahold of me and.
You're looking forward to it, aren't you?
I look forward to it as well. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was gonna ask Candy on the, should we have a formal motion that we support refilling that position? On the record?
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
In a second.
We have a motion in a second in support of refilling the position of a family and community wellness agent for Ramsey County. Further discussion. Seeing not all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same side. Motion carries. Thank you.
I will say one thing, you know, with Cindy there, it's definitely gonna improve her workload and she's quite capable of helping manage the 4H and helping to find somebody. So that's, that's, that's a blessing for us at the county level. So thank you much.
A lot of experience in the office.
Yep, she's been doing what she does. She's very well. Thank you.
Okay, you're ready now, Bill? Okay, technically, nine o'clock is nine o'clock. Should we, should we put in some of other visitors before we get to our people there? Of course. We can go to Karen next.
On the spot. Okay. And I don't know whether to stand or sit or whatever, but.
Whatever makes you comfortable.
Thank you for amending the agenda, I'm going to need to speak today. In the information I gave you, I laid out our needs a little bit, but I'd like to give you a brief overview. I don't know how familiar anybody is with the shelter. We opened our doors in two thousand sixteen, May, and we're primarily staffed by volunteers. Our goal is to be available and needed to provide temporary shelter for those in need who are working towards a more permanent solution. We receive referrals from the area's social agencies, churches, law enforcement, and do our best to accommodate the needs of the people they're working with. For the safety of our volunteers and the other guests in the shelter, we are a zero-tolerance shelter for drug and alcohol and we do not take in violent offenders. Doesn't matter if they have a criminal history as long as there's not violence involved. During the last two and a half years, we have operated totally on, from the support of our community service clubs, churches, private contributions, which allows us to meet our monthly expenses, rent, utility, that type of thing. And we maintain a six-month buffer in our budget for operational costs. It does not, however, allow for any staffing. A year ago, we got a grant that allowed us to hire a on-call person for the eleven o'clock at night to seven o'clock in the morning shift. For some reason, we had a hard time getting volunteers to take, so we had to hire somebody. And then we continue to fill the rest of the hours and most weekends with volunteers. I want you to know that we are a working board. Five board members put in thirty-seven percent of the thirteen hundred and sixty volunteer hours logged from August fifteenth of last month, last year to July fifteenth of this year. And these volunteer hours don't include cleaning, labor projects and/or those that provide meals. The grant has ended, so we are coming to the city and the county to ask for assistance in funding this position so that we can continue to provide the services we do to the county, or I'm sorry, to the people in need. What we're asking of you is, we met with the city commissioners last night for Devil's Lake and they committed to five thousand dollars to finish out the year of two thousand eighteen and amended their two thousand nineteen budget to include an allocation of ten thousand dollars for us for next year towards us. That's just less than half of what it costs if we have somebody there every night, which has not been the case, but as we continue to grow and get known, we expect it to increase. So we're asking you to match that. We will be talking to Spirit Lake Tribe and Benson County also for a portion, but ninety-one percent of our referrals are Ramsey County. We get twenty-nine percent from law enforcement, followed by Lake Region Social Services, the Human Service Center, Dakota Prairie, all of those type of agencies. We serve a variety of guests, sixty-two percent are male, thirty-eight female. Thirteen percent of the people that we see are children and ten percent are veterans. And what we provide basically is, they come in, we're only open from seven o'clock at night to seven o'clock in the morning. We count ourselves as a temporary emergency shelter. We want to provide for the needs, but we're not looking long-term. We're helping the people that need time to get back on their feet or wherever they need to go. We have a large percentage that only need a one-night stay and then we have like twenty percent that need more than two weeks for them to get through the paperwork processing or get IDs, that type of thing. The other services we provide, in the last two and a half years, we have rehabbed the, our portion of the old East Coast building to include showers and a laundry facility. So we provide an evening meal when they come in, the opportunity to shower, clean their clothes, have a safe bed to sleep in, and in the morning, they're given breakfast and a sack lunch to take with them. At this point, the only thing that we can do during the day is encourage them and direct them to the other agencies and towns that can help them. But that's fine because that's never been our goal to do at all, is to fill a need that hasn't been here before. And I guess that's about it. Our indirect services, we did, do have a grant that we have been using to educate and advance awareness of the poverty and the homeless in our area. With, we've done two bridges out of poverty workshops and two poverty simulations, open houses, and we've been trying to get different groups to hold their meetings or come to the shelter for lunch. And we continue to invite the city and county commissioners to set up and do that. Come and, you know, if you can't make a specific time, call me and I'll meet you there and walk you through, show you what we're doing and where the money's going. So again, what I'm asking is whether or not you consider supporting us, matching the funds that the city has committed to. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can for you.
Well, just one comment, we've got very good reports from Ron DeAlleray about your facility down there and working quite well and everything's going good, so.
I feel like my board comes and it reminds me that it's God's timeline, not mine. I want it all done in a hundred percent, but I feel like we've come a long way in two years. We've come from guests washing their hair and clothes in the bathroom sink to full shower facilities and, and that. One of the problems is the grants that we are eligible for, there's a lot for homelessness, but none of it is operational. It's projects, they want to see what they, where their money goes. So we got the grants for things like the showers and flooring and, you know, things like that. And we, we will continue to work on different methods, but we just feel like it's important and I don't want the volunteers. Right now, we run a core group of probably a dozen to twenty volunteers to take up most of the shifts and come in. In order to have people staying there and spend the night, we have to have somebody on-site a week.
We've heard, since being on the social service board, we've heard about it a number of times.
Yeah. Always positive things.
Always positive. And I would like to thank you very much, Karen, for all your time and put into this. And thank your volunteers also.
Yeah, they're pretty awesome.
I don't think we have, no doubt, we'll put this money in with the city, but not chat at least, but we're even, you know.
Well, that would be mine. Well, I'll just give you background, just because Karen called yesterday, last night after the city commission meeting and said, well, we gotta get on tomorrow because we're finalizing the prelim budget and we're gonna do anything. I guess from my mind, it's, you know, it's a no-brainer. I mean, locally, we're, we have to support what we have and the fact that this whole, this was all started out nothing.
There's a need.
There's a need. I mean, fourteen hundred and thirty volunteer hours in a hundred and twenty-two nights, there's a need. And, you know, it's a pretty, I mean, it's, it's money, don't get me wrong, but it's a pretty small amount of money in the grand scheme of our budget to support something that's working.
Wow, and I appreciate that and, you know, we wouldn't be able to do it, I can't say enough. I think that we have a very generous community. You know, we have businesses, churches, and all of the service clubs have supported us from the get-go. It has grown. We started out with the idea that we would set up something like the United Churches in Fargo, like their overflow and just kind of move around and save the churches. And came upon the contract with the Hope Center that allowed it to be a set position, you know, a set of spot. And, and that's how it has grown a lot. But, you know, I've got volunteers that scrub toilets and sand down walls we pulled off, shad carpeting off the walls before we paint it and, you know, a lot of labor hours. So I, you know, I, I'm proud to be part of this group of people because they have really put in a lot of time and commitment.
Like I said, everything we've heard at social service. Like I said, everything we've heard at social service, I'm pretty proud of what's going on there too as far as staff or the commission. One thing to add, candidly, would it be a good idea to build something like this? It's a good budget, you know, since we're ahead of the game here and dedicate the stuff.
Well, that's essentially why I wanted to put it on for today's agenda, so if we want to put something in, we can dedicate a line to it or however we want to do it, so it's in there.
Yeah, because I don't believe it's going to go away, you know, the problem.
Well, no, it's unfortunately. I mean, I think we have the same, I shouldn't say the same problem, but it's the same issue with something like this and with the extension. It's, we could utilize it more probably for different items if we could fund it.
Well, and one thing that I will mention, I brought to this city, and I would say the same thing to you, is that if we don't use your funding, the different options for, if there, you know, in the perfect world, there was money left over, we could, you know, whether you would require it to come back to you, whether we could use it into next year's budget, or even use it to pay somebody like winter days when the weather's bad, to pay somebody to be there during the day. Right now, we don't have any place or anything during the day for people other than we did connect with Lake Region Corporation and allow them to set up their Helping Hands closet in our facility with the idea that the two hours a day that they're open during the week, our guests can come back into the shelter under supervision and get warm or get out of the heat. We've never wanted to go to a full, like, submission shelter, you know, where people are there all the time and stay there forever. You know, we just want to help people get where they need to go, so.
Do we have a place in budget to take that five thousand this year?
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Yeah.
We do the five thousand for the year of twenty eighteen and then put ten thousand on the budget for nineteen.
When we sit there?
Yeah. We have a motion in a second to take five thousand on the budget for this year and put a ten thousand on the twenty and eighteen prelim budgets.
Could we put something in for like a quarter of a mil or something, you know, for next year's budget? Can we direct that to it?
Well, it's just going to come from the general, I would guess, now.
It's almost like a request, like a safe.
Yeah, like we have a safe line in the budget, but it's just, it's just under miscellaneous general. Okay, further discussion, motion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you all, I'm here.
Okay. Let's see here, I've got two papers over here. Four nine o'clock yet. That's, that's not Karen either, right? So we can move the nine up a little bit? I believe, Patricia and Larry, correct?
Yep.
Are here, so.
Dave Thompson is with us too, at least.
Oh, Dave Thompson's here. Okay, very good. So since it's, you guys are here, we'll get started with that then. Thanks for coming in.
Sure, well, the Ramsey County, Nelson County line, north of Highway Two or whatever, got gravel probably three years ago maybe or four, and the gravel was dumped in the center of the road, and they've done a good job of spreading it out, the semis did, but then the grading hasn't been done, and it's got a high ridge in the center. So we're looking at about a, we figured out about a ten and a half degree slope on the road, and we can't get down with any of our equipment because there's about, well, there's a foot in between sixteen feet, you know, there's a, there's a put a board out here with a level on it and was sitting, well, that kind of slope. So we can't move any of our machinery without wearing our shoulders off, taking them off, and we're just not getting anywhere with Kevin. He, he has the blade come out and then what he does do, but then he doesn't follow up to see if it's, if it's been graded properly or, and I just don't know where to go from here. We used to be Nelson County and Ramsey County alternate years, but now it's just Ramsey because they switched roads. So just wondering if you could help us, sir.
What road did we switch with, Kevin?
Uh, they took care of, I want to go south of the US two.
It's dangerous too, and small cars, it's impossible.
And he came by yesterday, which was the first time for a long time. I mean, there was even grass in the middle of the road, and it had been so long since he came, had been there. I mean, and that's very unusual.
And this was yesterday evening after two and a half hours of blade work on that road? So I don't know if it's bladed because there's a meeting today or.
Yeah.
It's got a pretty high crown to it.
Oh, terrible. And it's narrow, this is how wide it used to be. It used to go out to where it's foot lanes, on both sides.
And that isn't even far enough out.
How long is the road, or how many miles?
It's nine or so, eight, right?
Eight, I would say.
Yeah, you take the corner where it would be the Bartlett signs. Yeah, and then you, yeah, it would tie all the way up to six, six on going into the South Side itself.
And the roads get bladed to the center, so there's no gravel on the edges. And then when it rains.
This is what happens when it rains.
The water sits with no gravel, and then it's impossible to meet a vehicle when, when, after rain because all the water sinks in the sides of the roads and.
And I have a regular car, and this was, I took this yesterday. I can't, I couldn't meet a car because there's all this crap on the road and I couldn't get my car with it.
But I think the crown needs to be, it just needs to be flatter, you know. There's not gravel on the road. I think if it was bladed down and out, so there was less of a slope, what's there three, three percent supposed to be, or four?
Yeah, about four.
But there's ten, ten and a half. There's a foot on, or eleven and a half inches on, that's a sixteen-foot board that I've got. We figured out twelve inches, that would be ten point eight degree slope on there. We've got sixty-foot equipment and just can't move down the road, and that's the only common road in the area that we can't move our equipment down. We have to take shoulders off.
Do you like that all the way from the highway up?
There's, it's, there's places it's better now than it used to be, but it is still, for the most part, there's way too much of a crown.
And the further, excuse me, the further north the road goes, the narrower it goes. By the time you get to the other county road, it's.
They never go up very often, but I'm familiar with the road. But I mean, it seemed like when you get north of your place, you know, there gets to be a lot of cattails and water on both sides. There's been a lot of cattails and water on both sides. So imagine the road, I don't know. You wanted to keep it high enough so it stayed out of that, but I mean, I see your point.
But now it's crown dug out, then up, and then the cattails. I mean, so we're, the situation is going to get worse with the water on both sides.
Why don't we give Kevin a chance to come up with a solution and.
Yeah, he's been working on it.
But you got to follow up and see what he's doing.
I go out there quite often.
Afterwards? I've seen you all do it the first time I called, but.
I've been a few times, I mean, I could look at my GPS.
And I know you mentioned for me to talk to him, but I know other people who've talked to him and not very personal, which is fine, but it's not my job to talk to a blade man and tell him what to do. And another thing too, we have to constantly bring gravel up and over the road tracks, there's been people in the ditch because none of the gravel ever gets bladed up towards the tracks, and then pretty soon the boards are sticking out that far. And I just don't feel that, I don't mind helping, but I don't want to be liable if something happens. I mean, I feel we should have to leave the county road alone, but.
Down by the road.
Down by the road tracks. So every month we take this, gets here and it's just, and it's fine, you know, I don't mind doing it, but when we're blading, can we just blade a little bit of fill or?
You know, after a rain, one time this summer, Larry went out with his rake, and, I mean, it was just a big mud hole right by our house there. And he went out, and the blade man told him that he has no business out there, that it's a county road. I mean, it wasn't very nice.
Oh, you're proper.
It wasn't very nice to him.
That blade comes out of work, Kevin?
So.
I think you just need to be showed how to blade, or told how to blade. I think you need to be showed how, to be honest with you. So just looking for a little more follow-up, I guess, after the blade work's done, you know, more opinions or? I mean, I'm no blade expert by any means, but I know that, I know what's good for roads, I mean, I couldn't do the job myself, but, but I think somebody should be able to do it with new equipment that's over there.
Well, have to work into it, I guess.
So it was eleven and a half inches and sixteen feet?
And eight feet.
Okay.
That's from the center out.
Okay.
I kind of detailed it in one of the pictures. There's places where it is too steep, but majority of it is four and a half, five.
And there.
You know. You ever drive, drive down to a truck or a bus? And it won't be a school, school road, and it's a rural. It's dangerous, it actually dangerous. Can you pull over for the side of the hill? That thing just leans way over. And try it after rain, when there's no gravel on the edges.
I don't think that's going to rain. I will say that.
And if you meet somebody who are in the grass.
It's so narrow.
There is a narrow road, there's no way around that.
Yeah, it is.
It never used to be narrow, it used to be fine.
Oh, I don't know, I've gone over the years, it's, then you get water up on parts of it.
On spot, but that's not the issue of what happened and why it's. Well, even, even across the sloughs, if it's narrow or at least across the higher ground, you can widen it out, so you can meet, meet up, like the great north of Thompson's there. Oh, that won't immediately, because. This is a little bit of sloughs. And that's, that's only. The sloughs up here starts. But, but how many feet is it till there's water, fifteen feet off this way? Well. Drop down. It is through the sloughs and through the curves.
And I have a regular car, I mean, I don't have an SUV, I have a regular car, so I could not meet somebody, but my car was wrecked on that lump he was on the side.
Well, see, he was pulling slow yesterday, and all the grass and what he pulled in.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not even way over, it's like, I mean, one picture shows it there, that it's, it's not way over on the side, there's, there's room.
And there's plenty, there's plenty of room. And when I did the measurement here, I didn't go up to the edge where it's gullible, I mean, that's just a fair, fair spot on the road where. This is where you stay in the winter, or is it way?
Yeah, well, it's worse, yes, after yesterday, way worse than now. And then he knew we were coming here yesterday. He was there, he, I know he went by our house at least eight times yesterday, eight times. So he was going back and forth. He didn't go by Thompson's, he stopped at the slough, and then he went back again. And he was going back and forth and back and forth.
But even if there is water way out here, which I'm not sure if there is or not, but why can't the slope be taken off so the water drains off through it, instead of going into the.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Stop with that ledge, you mean?
Yeah, there's a, there's a big, there's a ledge here, then there's a big brown sod. So where does the water go in rain, so that kind of slope?
Water's supposed to go into the ditch, that's the purpose of the ditch, but it doesn't. It goes into the trough.
And that's off into the road. Well, let's look on it, I guess. Yeah, we can watch YouTube video and see what we're talking about Tuesday. It's a little thing, which is fine, I don't mind, but last year too, somebody got stuck on the road. It was still storming when they came on, blew it open, well, then, then Monday happened to be holiday, so when we called in, nobody was working till Tuesday. Wouldn't have got out there till Tuesday morning, it would be after eight after the bus went through. So we went and bladed the road, which is fine, I have no trouble with that, but I just start my tractor instead of, so I mean, I have no trouble with that, but I mean, because it, but I don't want to be liable for doing some of this stuff either, I guess, is the only, you know, and I don't know if there's insurance or, or if I'm liable if I open a road or do a little work on the road or.
Yeah, I guess we've all done that in our lives.
Yeah, and I don't mind doing it, but it's a liability, you know what I mean?
Look into it, see, I guess when I think about the roads, I know which one Nelson County has, I mean.
That's a federal aid road.
This is not a federal aid road. That's kind of a key right there, you know, and if you get federal aid money, you can, you can make more money into them roads and keep it probably wider. You know, I'm sure you've all driven, I don't know, you saw it with Dwayne, not four, but the next one over. And that's the one that Nelson County and Ramsey share. Goes across the bridge down there on the lake, you know, that's quite relatively wide road. It's always been a wide road because it's a federal aid road, you know, you can pour more money into that. You know, the money that created here, the county puts in money, the township's putting money, but you started out with kind of a township road, you know, forty years ago or whatever, down there when it was rebuilt as a federal aid road, and there's standards.
Well, this, this used to be a wide road, and if it was bladed right, it still would be a wide road.
Remember, it's not a federal aid road.
No, I know.
There's not federal government running behind the county or, you know, the state making sure that things are right and wide enough, you know, the way it was built, is what I'm saying.
I think the biggest thing, if it got graded, the slope down and graded out instead of piled in the middle, I think we could all live with it, because then I think the roads are a wide enough some too, but it just keeps getting graded to the center and it just doesn't work. So I don't think it's going to take a lot of money to fix the road, but that's my, that's my opinion.
I mean, he has to blade it anyway, so why doesn't he blade it right, correct, instead of doing what he's doing?
You know, there are a few roads across the county too, township roads too, that, you know, a little reclaiming on the, on the edges is, you know, it should be done just because there's grass, there's always going to be grass and ridges, so I mean, we have to, see, maybe there's alternative options, we would have to try to reclaim some of those edges a little bit. I know they make some of those, are they, on the blades, the cantilage type thing, where they knock up the edge and then knocks some gravel up and kick the grass out, and, you know, maybe something like that would be something we could look at or.
Do we mow this road?
Yep.
We do.
Okay, you know, maybe we could try to reclaim the edges a little bit, try to, you know, because.
It's hard to, I'm sure, yeah.
And it's, you know, it's, it's the constant problem of the more you blade, the more you blade, the more you create that little edge on the outside, unless you try to, you know, it's, it's a constant battle, so it's, we need to reclaim it as much as we can.
It makes it tough to mow because it's about that much of a ridge. Then you try to go over that one more, and it just don't work there.
I don't want to make excuses, but, you know, federal aid roads, when you use federal money, you got to slope them the right way. This road has never had that done to it. So, you know, it's not like the other federal aid roads, this is not a federal aid road.
Because like we said yesterday, he made enough trips by to go and clean it.
Love to work on it.
I met him, that's coming home from, I don't know, Laker or wherever. I met him, he was coming on the middle road, laying it out flat, nice, pretty nice. Next time he come, wind the rotor right back up again. And he sits, I mean, he sits with his blade off kind of like that, because I don't know if he wants to sit on that much of a slope. But he needs to be taught.
Okay, we're sure.
Thank you.
All right, hey, hold for the heads up?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to, yeah, we'll go to Kevin real quick. Sorry, talking about this.
All right, our projects, we have more. Uh, grouting is done on Ramsey Four, north of Seven. Uh, I think we're big to grow on that, and moisture. Any questions on that?
They're no good?
Yeah, it did, that's the, plenty of moisture in the gravel, it packed good.
Yeah, that's why I drove it back, should be just Sunday, but good.
Did you get down the county line though?
Yes.
What'd you think?
The one that they're speaking of? Yeah, I mean, it's, it's high in places, it's, and, and it's, it's very narrow in spots, I mean, I, it's very, very narrow in spots where I couldn't take two cars past each other through those slough sections. It's just not possible.
Cat trails in those sections.
Yeah, and there's, you know, cat trails, you can't see anything, and I, I agree to the point where they're talking about, so I think, you know, we just need to try our best to knock that ridge down and then see if we can reclaim the shoulders a little bit.
Yeah, but, a couple things with that, I guess, if we're cutting down that crown, I guess we're doing the same thing on the military road, those like first project goes on, that go to. But, you know, some of that ridge there is likely dirt that's sort of up there, that you cut that out and it just makes a mess.
We can only cut as much as there is some gravel on that midsection and try to spread it as best we can, but yeah, you can't cut too deep either, because you're just gonna put a bunch of crap on top of it.
Yeah, you gotta be careful with that, and then if you want it up off the shoulders too, even if you do, you know, grind it or whatever with a disc and bring that stuff up, it's gonna be more of a, there's, yeah, there's dirt and.
Yeah, certainly, there's no gravel.
As soon as you get some traffic on that, it, you know, washboards up, I think it's pretty ugly for a while, I mean, you have to do it, but it's gonna be painful for a little while after you make, make those changes.
Is there a, for certain two or three miles, it's worse than the other?
Yeah, those curves are, and then across the slough areas, there's two really big slough areas.
Northern Texas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're quite long.
I don't put on that book, you know.
There's not a lot of traffic down there though.
Not a lot.
But now it sounds like there could be a bust, so.
Better get a change.
Yeah, we are working on it, and we're not trying to make any progress or anything, it's just a look in progress. He did tell me that he needs moisture to cut that crown, you know, where it comes out in big chunks and it's hard to work with those big chunks because they don't break up. So that's why he was hitting that slough yesterday, they got a rain over there on Sunday, but anyway, I'm not trying to make excuses here.
And then the slough area is probably, you know, if the water, the water's way down from where it was in twenty eleven and stuff, I guess, probably those shoulders are probably dropped off pretty steep.
Yeah, they are.
It's, it might take a little more work than what, than what we're thinking.
In the nineties, they had forty to fifty inches of rain there for a number of years every year, you know, I mean, oh God, that country.
Yeah, and it was times when the water was right up on the shoulder.
Wouldn't go, water couldn't go anywhere.
Could go in place, they were closed basically. Okay, uh, bridge, um. Uh, middle of last week, the steel was still not in Fargo, but it was in Minnesota someplace, so our bridge still in being built, but. The plant that's gonna build it is aware that it needs to be done, so they're still telling me the twentieth, but. We're Saturdays to get it welded together by the twentieth, so. Being optimistic, but it could be put back one more week even, so it just adds up there.
Okay.
Yeah. Much I can do about it.
It's like the mysterious, where's the steel coming from, where is it at, need a GPS tracker on the steel? Amazon shipping.
There we go, still hopeful we get it done by the time, but it may be another week.
Okay.
And our paving project is gonna start out on Ramsey One and Military Road, Mount Hatteras is gonna start on the twenty first.
Yeah, I guess I talked to Strata yesterday, and they said the twenty first for the payers wasn't gonna be there, but they make a certain million before that, yeah, so, but, you know, they're. Have to change, keeping where I'm gonna be got today at three.
If anybody's interested in going to have to do a little.
Yeah.
Pouring, but it has to be done, it's one of those steps that needs to be done.
Yeah, federal aid, so.
Any questions?
Nope.
All right, then, uh, Bay to Ramsey Water District is looking for permission to install a sewer line under Ramsey County One. For Rich Schwab, which would be just west of Milligan, Walling Drive. He's putting in like three lives that are on the north side, the sewer's on the south side.
Second. Okay.
Motion carries more, they can get a little more.
Yeah, we will motion in a second to allow, uh, Great Energy Water District to pour in a sewer line under the county road, further discussion. Seeing none, I'm favor vote by say nine.
All right.
Both same time, motion carries.
Uh, next one, just a heads up, uh, I did meet with Creel Township and Papa Grove Township about maintenance on the Creel Road next year. And both townships are in favor of doing crack sealing, the chip sealing, and the painting on the Golden Road, and they understand that. How the shares, uh, the agreement says fifty percent Ramsey County, twenty-five for Creel and twenty-five for Papa Grove. But where the road curves that goes into Papa Grove, they obviously add a dollar, yeah, the split isn't quite like that. So just a heads up, they aren't in favor. And I do have it in my budget already, so. And then the third one, I got quotes from three different vendors for chips for next year, and Strata was the lowest bid. And we need three thousand tons, so they'll cost fifty-three thousand subletter.
Where's M C D?
Where's that one?
That mark group?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the Rockford?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept a little bit from Strata.
We're not taking delivery.
Yeah.
Let's push to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion, the second, to buy three thousand tons of chips from Strata at seventeen ninety a ton, further discussion. Uh, we're not paying to build, so just, uh, don't need a roll call, so all I favor vote by say nine?
All right.
Both same time, motion carries.
That's all we have.
Well, you got, all right, thank you, Kevin. Okay. See Brian, here it goes. Water Resource District, but it's.
Well, I haven't been over here, and I believe I will also, with Brian Volk as the chairman of the water board. I didn't know if you had any specific questions on your budget, if you want to ask, or? We did have an increase this year, I guess the main reason for that is, uh, we're working on the. Getting the Edmore cleanup assessment going, and, uh, as we got into that, with the engineering costs on those projects have a great increase since what we, we were. Used from the last time any assessment the districts reported back in the nineties. Uh, there, what we were looking at, our, uh, proposals that we requested that were coming in, uh, on the top side at two hundred thousand. Uh, we're, our board is responsible for sixty percent of that cost, and if we're doing an assessment, uh, the engineering has to be done before we even get to the vote to see if, uh, people will pay for that. Uh, so that's, uh, kind of put a crimp in our plans, uh, so we didn't have a budget in place to deal with that, if that's what it comes to. Uh, we're hoping to come in on the bottom side, you know, quite a bit lower than what our proposals had, but, uh. We felt we needed to be prepared to have a little bit of cushion in place on our budgets, uh, to handle this if it helps to that. After the Edmore, we've heard rumors of the guys in the Alton area, if we could be successful getting Edmore. Uh, into an assessed area, that the Alton guys would be interested in suing one also, so we thought this could be a long-term thing that we need to look at, so that's one of the reasons why we have a smaller increase in our budget.
Board, water board is, you know, stuck with some of this cost upfront there?
Right, uh, you know, if it comes out, uh, like our proposals were, like our range was, uh, if I remember right, two hundred and forty to two hundred and eighty thousand was spent at Paul Park, what they can. You know, we're responsible for that cost, if the assessment doesn't pass, the landlord will. So, I mean, our board would be responsible for sixty, probably sixty percent of that, kind of along with what came up.
But the kind of preliminary work that they did up at Edmore, I mean, the landowners were like, weren't they in ninety-five percent agreement with what we missed?
Uh, there, there's a lot, we've got a very good feel that it'll pass, uh, you know, from what the sentiment of the area and a few meetings that we had was. But those kind of scare us, if there's a lot of absentee landowners that, you know, weren't at that meeting, they're not from the area, may not see the benefit for it, uh. We're confident that, uh, we have quite a bit of confidence that this will pass, but we do, we ought to be prepared for being wrong.
Yeah.
Roughly, Brian, what do you think it's gonna cost the landlord, like per quarter, per acre, did you have any meat, rough idea?
Uh, offhand, my memory is kind of failing me out, did Paul did some of the preliminary work on it. Uh, you know, where our cost had been for our cleanup and the start, whether we've been running close to that twelve thousand dollars a mile.
A mile?
Right, for dirt work. Uh, so.
Then that would, so that would spread out over four quarters and you doubt a lot. And that's three thousand per quarter, or per quarter, and that's spread out over what, ten or fifteen years, twenty, what is that cost?
Uh, I guess that's all kind of depends on how we, how the cost comes in, how we choose to do it to it. I wanna say that we had some rough guesses that it would be what, five, six dollars an acre, but I can't remember the timeframe.
Per year?
No. For the assessment.
And that would be per year payment, or?
Yeah.
Well, basically, if the board gets done in a year, you either have to borrow, the, the board have to borrow the money, the joint board.
But I'm trying to figure out for the landowners.
Right.
How much it's gonna hit them, you know, that's what's gonna determine whether they go along with it or not.
I believe by the number of acres of, if I'm remembering right, it was, the total cost was guessed at, didn't that five to six dollars an acre?
Uh, I would guess the same, I think, but.
Total?
Yeah.
Total, total cost.
Total cost.
Engineer build it.
And that would be spread over ten years or something?
Well, whatever.
Well, if, you know, if it came to six dollars, I think we, you know, it could be a high six year, a dollar, dollar and a half a year would be acceptable.
But then you have to borrow the money to.
Right.
Bond it.
You have to bond it and have some.
And then the way.
So it'd be a little bit interesting if they'd even hand back, but, but that's often the goal.
How, how many acres are in the whole watershed that are gonna be affected?
I wanna say two hundred and fifty thousand boatload.
Something like that.
So there's a, quite a large area.
Piece of money, so just spread it over then, that's, that's the main thing, is who's already deriving benefit.
Lot easier to talk to people about this project than some of the other ones in the valley that are running thirty dollars an acre.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the landowners are concerned once and pay out their volume of that year or the next five years.
Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the questions from Brian on their, uh, twenty nineteen budgets for the water, water resource district, excuse me. Thank you, Tom, thank you for coming in.
Uh, I do have one other thing that came in front of us here, Jeff might be familiar with it, the Red River Basin Commission, I believe they send us over here asking for. Uh, money to be put into their funds for their advocacy, uh, they're, they're asking thirty-eight hundred dollars this year, uh, as a water board, we didn't feel that. This was necessary for us to join, we did wanna give the commission a chance, if you chose to be part of it. And wanted to pay the fee, we would act as a representative for you, but. I think it comes out every year, and I don't know that it's too popular out in the city, but we just wanted you to guys to have a chance to decide on it, so.
How long have you been in that?
I don't believe anybody has been. I, I don't think we have been for quite some time.
We haven't been paying anything ever. Well, what's their, what, what are they, what's, what, what are they advocating for?
Good answer, yeah.
You have that in the version, or?
Well, it, it, it's a whole Red River Basin watershed deal, although we don't get a whole lot of inclusion in that. Um, even though we are still a part of it, you know, technically, but, um. You know, it's made up of that North Dakota, Minnesota, Manitoba, maybe a representative from South Dakota with that. And Lake Traverse down there, but we're headwaters of it, but, um, we haven't been a part of it for a number of years, we just didn't, I don't think it's not.
It's thirty-eight hundred and something, first time, did they want us to go?
Believe it's about a yearly, it's an annual, I don't know, six, four, annual.
I've seen Red River in front of us once in my eight years on the commission. And that was not even at a commission meeting, I was at a water meeting somewhere, I remember there, there once.
They, they used to come to the, they was like joint board meetings on a regional basis, but their staffing has been reused, and so I haven't seen them at, well, marketing more up here.
It's good, we don't give them thirty-eight hundred.
And, and I think they asked that, that, or more from the, from the board as well, we haven't, haven't contributed either, so.
Benson or Nelson, I'm.
Benson does, so Benny is on there, Benny Martin's also, I haven't did it, it's a lot, so. We felt it was beyond what we, our scope that we deal with, so something you're interested in, we can, we'll be happy to help you out, but.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Well, it sounds like there's not a lot of activity to move on from, so I'll go to the next thing. Okay, um, before we go to Rhonda, since we have, uh, George here, and guessing you're here to talk about the Heritage Center?
No, I just came, I just came to listen.
Oh, you're just here to listen, well, you wanna talk about the Heritage Center now before we call Rhonda, just to fit it in?
I just wanna bring the board to attention, and I've had, and I believe other board members here have had. Comments and questions regarding the, the Heritage Center on their. Vision to move forward and, and et cetera, et cetera, brought to my attention the steps out front. You know, nothing being done. There's weeds growing on the one side of library that are taller than I am, uh, there's no maintenance, there's no nothing being done. And every time I've ever questioned anybody, I hear about all the events and all this and all that, and I'm just kind of. I am questioning my vote to allow their funding to continue, when I don't see any focus on where they're going. Uh, they tore all the museum or all the displays off the first floor, uh, haven't replaced anything, the. I think, and maybe George could tell me this, is not the money from the county mandated for a museum?
I think if you look at the, yeah, it's for historic purposes.
Yeah.
And if historic purposes aren't going on, why are you funding it?
And we, we have a, we have a courtroom, and we have a corridor upstairs, that's the extent of our museum. Um, it took them how many months to get on the roof?
Did it get fixed?
I don't know if it ever did. I just have a really hard time gonna go forward, I mean, I'm, I'm reading their, their monthly minutes here. You know, gala was lower than last year, but so were expenses, well, how much money did they make, I mean, I, I've inquired about that, I was never told. They've quoted their drum that, oh, the pay, the payroll's way down, well, yeah, because they don't have any employees, yeah, when. A year ago, when they had the museum, yes, money was tight, but they had a director, they had an assistant director, they had a, uh, a, a bookkeeper and a maintenance man. They have none of that, well, yeah, it's pretty easy to say that, oh, look at all the running news, if you don't have any employees. You know, you're not, you're not contributing to the, to the, to the county, I mean, you have a museum that you have to go and not look at the door and then call somebody? People don't do that, they go home. I just, I'm gonna just say up. I just, I'm gonna just say upfront that I'm gonna have a really, really hard time with their budget. You read through these minutes and you see a former board member is looking to have our current board moving. Who are you? I mean, instead of throwing out your reservations, why don't they come and ask? I mean, they were here. I just don't like the mudsting behind the scenes. You know what? You know, like I said, I've been contacted by a lot of people. And I believe Jeff also has been contacted by people regarding what, what they're gonna do. We got steps in the front that are failing, and then they, they, they brought up, oh, we got, we got all this grant stuff to redo the back end handicap. Well, that was all done. That was all done before any of these other people took, took forward. So, I just wanted that to be out there, so when it comes time to, to vote, you know, maybe, maybe some questions need to be answered.
Like I said here a couple meetings ago, or whenever, if that roof isn't fixed, I won't give any funding, and I will hold strong on that.
But, but why did it take them nine months or a year to, to fix it?
I think in April, we were going April when we first addressed it.
We were going April.
And they had...
All winter.
And they had a maintenance man that they fired that knew exactly about that leak. So.
We all know if we don't fix roofs in this country, we're seeing a lot of...
Well, and they, and they have all the damage inside now. Have they fixed the damage inside?
I hope they'll fix it after they get the roof back.
No, no.
Like, yeah, I guess they better look into that, or... The city puts money in that too, George?
Yeah, they do. The city puts in, uh, they would, they've gone to a system, because I asked them to do this when I was still on the board, where they adjust it upward every year based on the increase in, in mills and valuation. They never used to do that. So, this past year, it should have been somewhere in, a little bit in excess of twenty-three thousand dollars, I believe. A while back, I did go talk to the city also and, and suggested to them that maybe they ask some questions. We no longer have a community museum, and I'm sorry, I'm taking up some of your time. It's closed, you go there by appointment. Who's gonna do that? I'm not. Exhibits have been removed. The word about town is they're developing it into a community event center. I don't think that mission of that place as a private entity was ever designed to be an event center. Apparently, we don't want a museum in this area anymore, from the looks of where they are going. I've had a lot of people call me, I'm a little on board. What can I say? The long, you know, the other couple things that haven't happened, um, there were grants there for the asking. Three different ones, State Historical Society, Devil's Lake Area Fund, and Devil's Lake Community Fund. None of those have been applied for since the older members that were on the board got booted up, basically. Why not? If they're short of money, why do you discontinue collecting money for all of the events that people paid for? Are they not collecting rent for the spaces, the parking spaces anymore? That's my understanding, they aren't. You know, I'm not sure what's, it, it looks to me like it's going down the road to closure, uh, if it already isn't. And I think the only way that you can salvage that place as a community, uh, is if the city and the county jointly get together and maybe take over control of it, and, and hire someone who has a, a museum background to keep it open.
How much are you putting in? Do you have a rabid?
The, somewhere in the neighborhood of thirteen, that isn't it?
Twelve, seven, fifty is what we got for George today.
It's a quarter of a mil, yeah.
Oh, I should, we don't have our, that was entered from the commission here, so I guess we should...
Yeah, I, I do think it's unfair that we, how do we discuss it without any representation from the, the current community center board? You know, I know we're all disgusted and discouraged with how things are, are being operated, but there's two sides to your story.
That's correct.
So, hey, you know, and I know the, the stairs are an issue, but those stairs have been an issue for a number of years, falling back onto the previous board that was there. So, it's not something that happened overnight.
No.
And so I think any further action that we do, I, I think we should table it, the discussion, till we get some Heritage Center people within, you know, have that, be, have them here to answer some of the questions that we even have.
Maybe the roof's been fixed.
Yeah, yeah, and maybe it has. That'd be great if it has.
I hope so.
Depends, yeah, like you said, we all know what happens to buildings when you don't repair the roof. In this country, they, they go ahead. But, um, but you, you bring up a good point, Mark, and, you know, and I think we, we have some answers.
And, and I had no, no ill will with the commissioner and the whole report for him not being here. I just wanted it brought up prior to the budget.
You're just giving heads up. And I appreciate that, but, I mean, I shouldn't say concerned, we're just trying to think of where I'm going here. But at, at the end of the day, you know, if they change, you know, part, part of it comes down to is that the Heritage Center is a 501(c)(3), correct?
That's correct.
So, the Heritage Center technically is a 501(c)(3), controls the building, correct?
Correct.
So, we have the option to not fund them if that, if we so choose, but at the end of the day, we can't tell them what to do because they control the building. It's just that simple. Now, we're, we're, we're providing funding off of the offices that they are a historical society, so it's, you know, and, and it, and if, and if they're changing scope, then that is a question to be asked. I don't deny that fact, but at the end of the day, i- if they're changing scope, and, and we don't, as a board we don't like that, well, then we can exert some influence. But at the end of the day, it's gonna be, it's gonna be absolutely...
And, you know, based on...
And, and they're, they're outside, you know, and it comes back to the question of, you know, you know, how much influence do we want to exert as a board when they are a separate nonprofit?
Yeah.
I agree with what you're saying, but...
The, the influence that we have a...
Is, is the twelve thousand dollars?
Is the twelve thousand dollars or what have you. Um, and, you know, based on their bylaws, they, they can go ahead and, and change their mission at any point, based on the, the votes of their board.
Of course.
Um, so, um, if that's what they have so chosen to do, we need to be notified of that with the...
Yeah.
And, uh, and then when it comes time to, to do that funding, we can make that decision then.
But if that roof isn't fixed, that's when I'm basing my...
Yeah.
I will not go along with it.
Right. You know, 'cause we've offered an awful lot of help getting that roof taken care of.
Use our, you know, offer our expertise on things like that, and...
Well, we, we've even offered to, to help contribute to the funding of, you know, of the repair if needed. Um, we, we've, you know, hung that carried out there in front of them as well, so.
Uh, and like you said, we, we don't have representation in front of us. Maybe we're talking about something that got accomplished. We don't know that, so. Wait till we have additional rate field here.
Just, just one other comment in defense of the previous board in relation to those front steps. There was in fact a plan in place to evaluate what needed to be done, and, and apparently that was scrapped. And there was a, there was a party and a contractor also involved in, in relation to some volunteer labor to repair them. But apparently that was never done.
Oh, the, okay, help me out, and the ramp they built in the back, now that gets you into the building?
Yes.
Yeah, tiny capless floor ramp, yeah.
That was secured through a prior board action and a grant that was applied for through North Central Planning.
What year? You know?
Uh, would be, well, now it'd be about a year and a half, two years ago now.
Two years.
Yeah.
I think it's about done, right?
I don't know. I, it looks, I think that they're still gonna put up some railing, I believe, but I don't know that.
The reason I think it's just about done is because I talked to the guy that's doing the railing.
Okay, yeah.
I happened to run into him, and I do my business.
I presume so.
He said that's what he had worked on, huh?
Leeson's doing it, I think.
I think they got a deadline on eighteen dollars.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
It's coming up, but, okay, well, I don't think it necessarily needs to be tabled, but it's a discussion that we...
It was just a discussion, I wanted to bring it up. That's all it was.
Okay. Rhonda, you want to call her?
Yep.
She's out on the road?
She's in good luck.
Oh, gosh. Lucky her. Lucky her, that's right. It's a disturbed one of, one of our other readings, so it's...
We're sorry, it is not...
You don't just press the one before the number?
It's a cell phone, we usually do.
Can we go up? I'm going here. I'll kind of down here. There you go. It's more like it.
Hello?
Hi, Rhonda, it's Candy.
Hi, Candy.
We have the rest of the board here to go over your, um, budget.
Yeah, I'm just gonna find a spot here and, um, for you to go.
Okay.
Are you there still?
I'm, I guess I'm here. I have just wanted to go over the current...
Oh, that's right. Just wondering, wondering if, are you up the Capitol?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm ready. I have the, I have the information in front of me. I did, um, we did prepare, Christie and I, social service budget, uh, calendar year twenty nineteen. I've been hoping you have that in front of you.
We do, yes. You there?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we all have it in front of us.
Okay, I, um, I just wanted to go over what, what that says. We have a total overall budget expenditure of two million five hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred nine dollars anticipated. Um, now, remembering, just to add a little bit of, um, information here, we could have a true up or true down come the middle of twenty nineteen, based on case load. Um, we haven't, um, you know, they'll give us plenty of lead times to, to judge or, um, be prepared for that, but that is a possibility. And then, again, we could, um, and then we're gonna be going into legislative session, so we'll be looking at a lot of changes possibly with how we budget. But our payments have not, um, did not change. I think our payment from the state, um, about one point nine million. So we're adding in, you can see what, um, what county and town or counties, um, addition to the budget is. But I guess I would just take some questions. If you have questions about the explanation.
Yeah, we had explanation in the packet of, essentially, you know, I guess I can speak up a little bit too. We did the same thing that the county did, two percent coal over the step. Um, and then we added in, uh, shelter care increase, uh, 'cause we've been using it quite a bit. And then we added some line item, money for some computer upgrades and one vehicle replacement, until that's meeting, finalizer like it. So, pretty, uh, pretty standard across the board, little increase, but... And, uh, the, the state's looking at rolling out their new computer programming in February, correct, Rhonda? It's kind of what we're shooting for now?
Yeah, so the state is line item was in capital outlay because of the new Microsoft, um, and the support from Windows seven.
Yeah.
We got really hit with that. If you really need to update that operating system before the state economic assistance program, state control level needs to be updated, so that was a big hit on our budget.
Yeah, the, the state's running out, running out their new software and their market managers won't handle it, so. It's basically what it comes down to. So we gotta do some upgrades.
Correct.
Any, any questions for Rhonda on the board?
This is the other question, Rhonda, this is, Rhonda, this is what the Lake Social Service Board approved, right?
Correct.
Yeah, our, our, I believe the state this year funding was one point nine nine six or something like that. It will be pretty similar next year, right? Because it's still set out that baseline twenty fifteen funding level, so.
Right, it could be a true up or a true down of a couple percentage points. We're looking at that. We actually did just get an email on Friday or Thursday that, um, we may have, the increase in second payment by thirty-eight thousand dollars. It's really unpredictable. You know, our revenue could change a bit, but then I, I, I don't know, would it even out the second half? If we're gonna look at, um, it would be a wash, so it's really hard to predict. But right now, the revenue we have projected is what's on the budget. State has it in front of you.
Okay. Any further questions?
I think it looks fine, and as long as the social service board has gone through it, we trust their opinion, so.
Yeah, and, and to, to remind everyone, we're using dollars that we had leftover budgeted from previous years, sitting in the, in the, uh, the bank account, so to speak, uh, to basically fill in the gap between the state funding and what we have to do locally. So, we won't have any assessment again this year, and then we'll see what happens in the nineteen session for twenty. Is basically what it comes down to.
Just to remind the other commissioners, and we're using two thousand fifteen budget, right?
Two thousand fifteen, the base here for the payment, yeah. Yeah, and that's, again, that's something to take up with the legislators for nineteen session.
Another thing we take up with it, yeah.
Yeah, launch a list of pages today.
Yeah, a lot of them.
Yeah, it's so much later, so it's been kind of tough.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's the main problem, is there's no one playing around with that. We're doing, we're gonna be doing twenty nineteen business at twenty fifteen dollars.
Correct.
Which doesn't work so well when we've got the same caseload and you have continuing to rise in wages, if you want to try to stay competitive.
But it's still better using around the county dollars, right?
Well, we are lucky to have, uh, the, have the money in the bank, so to do the extra money that fills in the gap. That was very good.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we're not gonna not take the money.
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions? We don't have any, so thank, thank you, Rhonda. Anything else to add?
No, I, I really appreciate you letting me here by phone, and I appreciate it very much. And just thank you.
Go, go have fun at your other meeting.
Okay.
Stay out of trouble, stay out of trouble, yeah.
I, I, I will.
Thanks, Rhonda.
Bye.
Bye.
Well, one thing I should add, they're putting in a bill that will, um, help fund the highway departments too. You know, it's gonna get through Congress, I heard, Senate and everything, but...
That's that infrastructure bill.
Yeah, they're gonna get up on that. Yeah, they'll get like one point six million dollars out of that, but I don't know if, if they'll be earmarked for, you have to use it for this, or anything like that.
Yeah, there's still a lot of question as to how it's gonna be put together, but, yeah, the preliminary numbers on there, yeah, was like one point six something.
That what it was?
One point, between one six and one seven, so, but the question is, what are, yeah, what are you gonna be able to use it for specifically and, and all those kind of things?
Interesancy of the governor to have to deal with this one.
Yeah, yeah. So, there's a lot of things that are gonna have to, that are gonna play out in the nineteen session, and it's gonna be interesting, so just, you know, so. But it's out there. It's, it's kind of the first shot out, the pushes into nineteen already, so. Okay.
Got a lot of press.
Yeah, it did. Candy, got a lot of your list of front pages here for us.
Yeah.
Start off page one, huh?
Yeah, start off page one. Um, I guess your guys is glad you're here. Um, there's no step, but I just did the two percent for salaries. Um, everything else stayed the same. Probably, you know, no increases on anything. News are about the same. Capital outlay, we've just left that. I know discussion has been about, in years past, about either buying new tablets or something, but I just keep it there, in case we wanna buy a new conference hall.
Yeah, so you can buy a new conference hall. That, that would be something I would, I would support before we buy tablets, 'cause we could, we could, we could be glad.
I can check it out.
Today was actually pretty good. The problem isn't sitting in here, though. It's when you're calling into it and you're, you just, you're tinging stuff.
Or on the other end?
Yeah, when you, like in Rhonda's situation, like, she probably couldn't hear when, like, Jeff talked... Yeah, when you like in Rhonda's situation, like she probably couldn't hear when like Jeff talked very well and stuff, speaking from, it's not the best.
Well, and I'm just wondering if those.
I don't think those are the best or.
Can't we first put a telephone though, or whatever, won't they?
Yeah.
We'll put a sign up that we got from now.
That's crazy.
Well, we did it for nothing, right?
We're gonna start advertising.
We're on YouTube all the time, so.
So like the, so do we have to take commercial breaks then too? Take a break in the middle of the meeting, remember?
Put a plug in at the end or something.
Go to telephone.
Let's keep both a plug and a pin.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should be selling, should we be selling ads or?
We can do that.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Oh, we could, it's a revenue stream.
You can have commercials or something there.
Governor's like business.
I'll, I'll check on it, I'll check on it.
Okay.
Okay, page two. Um, the only thing that we changed was the um. We buy the, the like public administrator attending care. Um, and that was been visiting with Rhonda and Christie, um we up that to ten thousand.
Well, you switch that up from what we have on the paper?
Yeah, yeah, it was after, after there, and I believe it was because of a dollar increase in wages.
So that bottom number should be nineteen?
Nineteen, two, yeah. Um, page four. Be the auditor's budget. The only thing that changed was um the wages according to the pay scale.
Anything else is the same.
Everything else is the, um, is the same, yeah.
What do we use that, that uh, that deputy salary budget that we?
Well, I've, I've left it there in case, you know, like we'll just see how it goes this year with three estimated tax statement.
Case you have to bring in some part-time help or something like that, a temp or.
Yeah. Yeah, I've kind of left it in there for, you know, election or, you know, just someone to come in and, because once you get rid of it, it's hard to get it back.
Speaking of, not, not to diverge from the budget, but the recount, so when is, we don't know when that's gonna be, I said. We have to recount all the ballots because the Libertarian candidate for Secretary of State won his lawsuit against the state that we have to recount.
Really?
Yes, so we have to hold a full recount here. Every county in the state has to hold a full recount. Yeah, two hundred and forty-seven votes in total.
Oh?
State statewide.
And to get on, well, you know what's important to their party, because you need to have a statewide candidate on every, on every ballot. Not every ballot, but every two years, at least one statewide candidate to keep your statewide party affiliated status.
Yeah.
Uh, so they drop off as an affiliated party, if they don't have somebody on the ballot, well, he's fifty-three votes away, so he's hoping that they'll catch the fifty-three votes in the recount.
And we had.
So everyone has to recount.
Where'd you run?
No, it was all in the news last week.
It's in the nu, been in the news, yeah.
It was in the news last week, he sued, he sued the state and then the state actually, the Supreme Court said, we don't wanna have to do this essentially, but yeah, you have to recount.
With the Supreme Court, you know.
Yeah.
I want you to talk with.
Yeah, so it's gonna cost every county this.
For two votes, a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, because he had two votes in our county on the original ballot.
Two votes. Yeah, and there's, we had a.
So we have to recount how many ballots by year.
But how, how much harder money is it to talk to them? Daniel Grant?
No.
Have they allowed people to come in and tell me?
No, because it, it'll consist of myself, the chairman of the board, the state's attorney, the recorder. And then it said you could employ up to four, you know, four people, but I don't, I mean, I don't think that we.
So we'll try to keep, it does, it has to be done in a lot of timeframe, but we'll keep the cost down as much as we can.
Well, and we haven't been actually given official notice.
Yeah, they just kind of threw out the, it's gonna happen, that, so.
Because once you give a, once you're given official notice, you only have fourteen days to count that.
So they've given everyone a, kind of a soft lead that this is gonna have to happen at some point, so, yay!
On top of that. Yeah. Yeah, so.
I don't have anything else to do, except I watch the recount.
Yeah. I'm getting vacation.
Yeah, listen, you sit here and watch.
And he's, well, he's, he's trying to get someone to be his representative in all, if you recount this.
Oh, really?
So he's gonna have to talk to one of the two people that voted for him.
You gotta let him vote for me.
So he's gonna. What it comes down to is, what it comes down to is the letter of the law says he deserves a recount, and that's what the Supreme Court, so we have to recount, which it sounds kind of ridiculous, but I guess I don't have a huge problem with it from the fact that that's what the law says, we gotta do it, we should do it right. So, anyway, sorry to interrupt, I just, it, it ran to the top of my mind when I was looking at, when you said election.
Okay, no, I'll say it. Yeah, um, page eleven. I changed nothing on all of them, everything has pretty much stayed the same.
What's that life insurance plan, right? Just a period, a big, big dollar figure then.
It's, it is so much per employee, I can't remember the.
So we, so that's what it, that's what it costs us to cover life insurance for everybody for the year?
So many cents. Eight cents, eight cents, seven cents.
Maybe it doesn't cost a whole lot per employee, and most of that comes out of the employees' portion, sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Interesting. I remember seeing that on the, on the, this country.
Oh, I de, I decreased postage.
That's not election years.
Yeah, well, I, I don't, I don't know with this estimated tax statement, I, I think we should be okay, but. Um, I did up the copier, um, we, we did some changing around, um. We took the bigger copier that was over across the hallway and put it in the back room between the treasurer and the auditor's office. Um, there's more options on it, so instead of printing to printers which are, you know, dying off, we just send everything to the printer. Um, we do a lot of like bigger print jobs to printers, so um if we go over, it's um, I think it's six cents a page. That we're charged, but it's, it's still cheaper than, you know, a two hundred dollar printer for lap printer and a two hundred dollar printer for lap printer, so. Kind of, you know. That was the increase just to cover, cover overage. Election expenses have decreased. Hopefully that they don't decide, have a special election. Page seventeen. Um, yeah. Mental health. Uh, yeah, I, I don't know where we. I don't know if that's gonna cover for this year.
Oh, you mean the fourteen?
Yeah.
Uh, we've used quite, quite a bit of that, obviously.
Yeah. And that's a lot of stuff that's going through the court now, you know, that comes down this way. Um, you know, court fees and stuff we haven't had, haven't had a whole lot, um, the audit fees, that's state auditors. I got, I got pushed back um due to my stuff, um, it got pushed back to September. So, even though they have almost all of it already, but we'll be here for probably just a couple days. Um, page eighteen. County fair, um, they're always given just one mill. Which is pretty close to what we, we put fifty-eight for. Health insurance, I still haven't gotten anything from Carrie, I have a, I have a phone call in to her, I thought I'd have it by now, but. I just took last year's figure and I updated by the eight percent of what she, what she told me. Um, county park, that's the fifteen thousand that we give to like access every year. Where it goes. Um, advertising, what is the advertising? Is that for, um, I think that's part of job development, I don't know, they might use it for, um, residency three years. I know when Carrie was in that she had visited about, you know, dental vision. And we put, we put together, um. What it would cost. The only way that we can go forward with that is the county would have to pay. A single plan. And then if, you know, if those county employees wanted to pay family, then they could pay the difference for the dental and vision. And I think we put it as part of the.
What page is that?
Um, that was this page, this page that was in the packet.
It's a shame you can't just offer it, you know, their policy, they're having to pay the single because it's far better coverage than we have now, and the cost is better. But right now, we can offer the other plan we're offering, but our current cost is, as an employer, just kind of coming. I mean, I, I don't know what everybody else's feelings are, I mean, that's, it's a decent dollar figure to pick up a single, I mean, there's no doubt about that. The question would be, is there any other uh outside vendors that we haven't looked at that maybe have a good plan?
We'll see.
Good coverage and stuff that would still allow us to offer it, but not pick up the single cost?
Well, and, I mean, since Elizabeth Laff and I took over, I mean, we've, we've changed it. And it's, it's just not.
So there was another company we were working with before, well, maybe you would be, you could look back to that, see.
And, you know, those people are on it for, you know, maybe a year's time, and then all of a sudden they get a premium notice that, you know. It went up by, you know, so many, I mean, we only have eight people on our dental plan and it's, it's very, very expensive. And there's a waiting period, there's, you know, they only cover so much.
We, we still offer that Flex Medical, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think a lot of people do that, um.
Yeah, some people do, some people have it through, you know, their spouse or, you know, something else, but, you know.
Yeah, dental insurance has always been very expensive.
You know, but this, I mean, you know, dental for dental for a single person through Blue Cross is only thirty-five dollars a month. There's no waiting period. You know, and like she said, with us being self-funded, it's, it's kind of a win-win situation because, you know. Not everybody is necessarily going to use it, or, you know.
Well, and that's, and that's, that's why it's a shame, because if, if you look at the single policy, you know, thirty-six bucks a month, if you think about it, if, if you use the dentist and you go twice a year. It's probably a couple hundred bucks every time you walk in the door for cleaning x-rays, all that kind of stuff, like thirty-six bucks a month, you get your money back, plus you got coverage in case you have to have anything done. Which is why it's really disappointing, because I, that we can't just offer that coverage option and people could just pay out of pocket, because I mean, once we have to start paying for people, thirty-eight thousand bucks a year is, it's a good chunk of change.
And there's. Yeah, and there's.
You know, and we're already getting, looking at increases on, on pretty much every other budget we've seen so far.
Yeah.
Over, and there's four, four places in town that accept the Blue Cross. Where the dental plan that we have now, um, there's only two, and they're.
And there's no vision in town, right?
Um.
Right now?
No.
You gotta go to Grand Forks.
You gotta go to Grand Forks. So with the Blue Cross, like right now, there's two, and I think they're trying to get, I think they're in, still in contractual with like the iPhone. But I just, I just took that figure and, you know, I put it, I added it in budget and it did.
So it's given budget right now, or is that?
I just, I just added, I just put it like by the Blue Cross.
Oh, it's under the health insurance plan?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so you, you, you took that four hundred fifty-five thousand, I just put a sticky note and I added, I added to forty thousand, but I, like Carrie said, I don't think it'll cost that much. You know, just so that we have it.
Well, just to have it included in the prelim, so we have some options.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I guess I don't have a problem with including it in a prelim, just knowing that it's something that we can all, we, you know, it's, it's a savings spot, once we get this whole budget all that figured together.
Yeah. Because if you don't do it now, there.
Yeah.
You can't, you know, we can go back and.
I think that's reasonable.
You know, cut back later or whatever, but maybe.
Page, page nineteen, uh, do we need to update that N S O N S general?
Yeah, that's my next page, yep.
So sixty-two, six oh five on that then?
Yep. So instead of seventy thousand, it's like eighty thousand.
You can add what?
We're adding that ten thousand dollars for the.
For shelters because of the missing earnings.
And then I think what I'll do, I think what I'll do, um, is for, like for next year, you know, just, I mean, I'll have her, just write a letter or something, have her write a letter each year. You know, asking for that funding, kind of like save does.
Yeah.
Just so that we can have it as part of the, part of the budget. Um, thirty-six, yeah, big one. It's just the emergency fund.
She is the same.
Yep. Thirty-nine is the bond, that's enough money to pay off our bond of, it's, I have a little bit of carryover, so it's. Be, just high to eighty thousand. And last but least.
Nope.
Uh, yeah, save the best for last.
I was thinking about this yesterday when I saw the bill, is that gonna be enough? Unfortunately, I'd hate to ask that question, but.
I mean, I, I'm wondering the same thing, you know, should that number be one point five instead of one point three?
Because I mean, I mean, hopefully, we're not gonna have months like this month, but we were between, and we pulled ranche out of this too, correct? So we were combining a hundred and twenty-two, a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars this month, one twenty-three. I don't think that's.
You take that uh times twelve, that's.
That's one point four seven six.
Yeah. See, I just, yeah, I just.
Which is insane, I think the first year I was on the commission, we had what, four, five hundred thousand dollars, question it?
Yep.
A mill is sort of about.
Yeah, maybe it's five, yeah, five hundred or change.
It's like five hundred.
Yeah, but that was about where we were at. We're, so we're up a million dollars in four years.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's, and it's, it's nobody, you know, well, I shouldn't say it's nobody's fault. Because the cost of incarceration, we have to bear locally more, but I mean, we're seeing that downward pressure, I mean, there's just no other way around it. Our, our mandates are up, what did these, what did Rob say, like a third from what, from our high point we've ever been at or something like that, I mean, that's crazy. It's.
All right, it's.
We don't have a choice. We don't have a choice. We gotta fund it.
Unfortunately, I guess we could act her back and film, but they can do well. Be that simple, I guess.
Well.
And the one, the one point three.
That's what's a evil one.
You know, the one point three was off of when we were paying bills of, you know, like eighty thousand and forty.
Eighty. Yeah, 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 it seems like we're at a hundred and change range now.
Well, and then another thing I'd, probably a good time to bring it up is. The county share on these cameras and intercom, you know, I talked to you and Mark Knowles, we talked about, uh, going through the sheriff's budget like we did with the search and rescue. I think that's a good way to do that.
Yeah.
I. I'm not quite sure where they're at with that. I'm more than ready to bid or, I will find out before this month's meeting, I know that, but.
That's where I think they're at, is they're gonna have it for the next meeting.
No, we've, yeah, no, we've got to have it the prelim budget to finance it.
Right, yeah, I think our share is gonna be. Half of what, what, five fifty?
Five fifty to five seventy five, something like that.
So it's like a three hundred.
But we better put these three hundred in there.
Thousand?
But that's for the sheriff.
Three, three hundred bucks.
Right. I think we should still run that through the sheriff's budget.
Well.
Like we did with the search and rescue or what do you think, Carrie? I thought that worked pretty well. And then we'll.
Well, I don't, I guess it doesn't really matter which line item it's it's under, I mean, it's gonna be.
It would, it would be easier just to keep it under the L E C. Because then you you're gonna, you're gonna know right flat out how much money you, you know. And the only thing that goes through the sheriff's budget is is the, you know, I mean, is the payment for. You know, alone.
Yeah. But I thought we'd do that again with the cameras and intercom.
Because we did, they investigate in, um, through the state, the bank, right? State bank, it's not gonna work.
They did, yeah.
So it's still.
City had all kinds of objections in that alone.
Okay.
Forgot about the drive, pursuit that.
But so we'll have to finance it locally then?
But I know earlier, they got to do it somewhere there, I guess.
If we don't.
You gotta, they later anyhow, they put a new camera up in the hallway, in the entryway out in the law enforcement center because. You can't pick out who who comes, wants to come in.
So do we add that three hundred to the corrections center budget as well? So we're looking at.
That's the question, I guess. Do we wanna do that or do you wanna take a, like we did with the search and rescue?
Well, we gotta have it somewhere, you know, so.
Well, yeah, I think the only question is, is, well, there's two questions. Where do you wanna put it in a budget? Do you wanna put it on the sheriff's?
A lot of.
And then are we gonna finance or are we gonna pay all in one shot? That's the same question. You know, financing it over five years means we can probably keep it to about a mill a year and change versus taking six mills right off the top and throwing it in a million dollars in. And it's gonna cost us some financing charges, you know, the interest, but we can keep, you know, the ramifications of the tax costs down a little bit more, it's gonna cost us a little more with the charge, yeah.
So I, you know, I guess out of my thinking was shoot it up six mills and are we gonna be able to take it down the next, you know, twenty years?
But I mean, if we're looking to pay the whole thing, then and we wanna and we wanna put the budget up just to cover the own app costs, just the regular operations costs, that means we're looking at. Another half million dollars on top of that one point three, which is already up a hundred. So we're talking six hundred thousand more dollars, just a lot for us to consider, that's ten mills.
I'm sure it's worth something, twenty, something like that.
And that ten mills will get added on to the general because we can, we're maxed out at what we can.
Yeah. Yeah, and we were already at what, forty two on the general, something like that?
Forty one.
Yeah, and the general's capped at sixty. We're creeping, we're creeping, creeping, creeping close to the general cap.
I, you know, with the engineer from Minot to give assessment, I was about five fifty to five seventy five, I think, like that.
Yeah.
This is me, Jason, whatever.
Jason, yeah.
And he's the one, again, we talked about it before, he's the one to do the huts of organs, we aren't, you know, the administration.
So this contract that we signed.
Great, great, great what? Very ingenious.
Very, you know. We we agreed upfront to pay for half of the engineering costs.
So you, so you wanna do that one, I guess. I talked to Steve, he had no problem. We wouldn't say like that, search and rescue, I did one day and left on search and rescue.
It's been five, it's been five years.
Um, but after this year.
I did two more, yep.
I thought it would be simple.
I would, I would just say, just to change this and keep it out of here, to keep it everything.
Do it that way?
Just so that we know, I mean. We can just run one line item and this is how much we spent doing. So one point.
So we're increasing, uh, page forty four to one point, how much?
Yeah, that kind of shirt.
We're definitely lifting up and looking into ourselves. Run for this job, it'll be fun. Yeah, it's real fun.
Concerning about public perception, I guess, that's one of the concerns about it. Everybody all right, okay?
Well, I guess what it comes down to at the end of the day, we know the amount, I mean, if we keep tracking on the same mandates, it's gonna cost what it's gonna cost. And in public perception, regardless if if we're putting money in the facility or not, those prisoners are gonna have to be housed somewhere. Whether it's here or rugby or Grant Forks or wherever it's gonna be, it's in our best interest to keep this facility proper and running because it's gonna cost us worship someplace else.
One of the things that started covering the portfolios is that, you know, I haven't heard from earlier, you know, I expected to hear something from, by Al. You know, he turned his paperwork, his report over to to Birch and Jim Saylor, who took Redmond's place. And then he calls him the legal team, who that is like. But there's four or five people that were made the determination, whether it's closing offices or lifted. Love to be on here, I don't know. And I haven't heard nothing. I heard from him probably two weeks ago, he called me. He told me what he was doing, so I expect to hear this week. That's what I know there.
I mean, I, I think at the end of the day, the main, the main argument that needs to be made is that. The cost of incarcerating prisoners is 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 not. Not a determination we've yet, essentially. The state is pushing pressure down on us and we're having to house more people locally and the cost incurred or it's right around the paper, I mean, it's just that simple. So we're gonna have to work with our legislators and we're gonna have to, gonna have to push hard, just saying, hey. We need some help. It's gonna break us locally. You keep talking about properties actually, this is not helping us.
No, it's not.
At all, I agree with you.
And I think prison probably around seventy.
No, it's, it's higher now.
It is, I, it's. Are they averaging?
Yeah, they're averaging like eighty five, ninety.
Yeah, and we're not taking any specials, we don't B I A. There's B I A money out there, so we, yeah.
And that's all, that's all locals. And that tells you the difference because before, probably last year, we were maybe fifty to sixty out of the whole day.
Yeah, for five, another fifty five.
So we're, we're housing another twenty to thirty people at our local costs that would probably have been in the, in the sheriff who said, but we're not picking up any of them. It would have been in, in the, they would have been a sick person.
That's a felony bill probably around twenty, twenty five, I think around thirty, thirty five and higher, so, you know.
All the, all the costs are just getting put down. Like you said, the only, and and it's not like we're not trying other options to keep people out as best we can through electronic monitoring and every other option we have.
Tended care.
The, the judges try their best to help us out with those things, but, yeah. Is what it is, I guess. Okay, so. We're gonna move that line up then, okay? Is that your last page? That's your last page?
Yeah, I, yeah, I see, I see the best for last.
Fantastic. Nothing like ending on a positive, good job. Okay. So. Uh, unfinished business, I think we can scratch that, meaning we're gonna have that, uh, like Al said, the date will be October second, will be the conference committee, so don't have to worry about that September fifteenth meeting. So we can scratch that. Uh, so new business, review recommendation from the home rule charter committee. And Lucas isn't here, so I don't have no chair here, but I obviously was at the meeting. Um, at our final meeting, uh, and I say final because we approved, uh, unanimously of all the individuals that were there, we were missing a couple of members at that meeting, but unanimously to. Forward a recommendation to the commission as a whole that it should be put on the ballot in November. Um, we finalized the document and then we also finalized the language that would go on the ballot. Um, if it is, if the question is, is posed on the ballot, because that's something the home rule committee has to approve too. So that language is approved. I don't know if we have that informed, I mean, doesn't matter, I guess, until we make a decision on what's gonna happen with the actual document.
What day do we have to have this finalized and get it on the ballot?
Uh, well, it would have to be sixty four or sixty five days or previous to the general, so it can go on the ballot, so. I think it's September second or something like that. It's before our first meeting in September. So we have until our second meeting in August, and that was part of the process. We wanted to get it done. So that every, the commission here as a whole would have time to look over the document, ask questions, think about it, and then we could probably act in the second meeting in August is the plan.
You know, I was at the army there the other night, a while back, and. What happened to that sheet? Which, the army, when you defend the.
Oh, the, just the, the actual, uh, shorter sheet, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's just, that just is a, like a summation, basically, right? That just wasn't in the packet, I guess. But yeah, the actual document itself is, is six pages and ten hundred, something like that. And we made a couple of little changes at the meeting, but most of it was just grammatical stuff. The, the main, uh, form of the document didn't change at all from, from the public hearing itself.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to move that we tabled the recommendation from the home rule charter to the second meeting in August.
Okay, motion to table?
Second.
We have a second. Pretty good discussion on table, tabling isn't a debatable motion, so. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
I just want, one comment, one thing I would like to say in the second meeting in August is exactly what's gonna get put on the ballot.
The, the wording of that's gonna be on the ballot.
Okay.
You, you guys hardly have that.
We have that already.
I guess.
You better grab it so we don't misquote it, but it's, it's very short. Uh, I, I guess before, let's, can we vote to table first and then I'll make an explanation? Okay, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same, sign. Motion carries in its table, uh, uh, I can include some discussion. So basically. The, the question that is asked is very short, but the whole home rule in its entirety has to be published in the paper previous to it. So that's basically how the question is posed. Yes, the whole document has to be published. That's part of, uh, that century code. So basically, it would say, so the date to be determined, uh, is when we're gonna publish it, but it said, the question would read. Shall Ramsey County adopt the home rule charter as published in the official county newspaper on the date that it's published? That's the whole question that's asked on the ballot. We modeled it out for every other county we looked at, Williams County, and, uh, I think.
And it'll be published in the paper legible?
That would be the whole, yes.
Well. Louise isn't here, too? No.
Yeah, I saw that the last builder, whatever, that were in there.
Other mills and the, uh, all of the foreclosures were.
Foreclosures, uh, yeah.
Yeah, the foreclosure listed, right?
Were, were legible.
Yeah, it was supposed to be published in. I don't wanna dash, but. It was supposed to be published in Monday's paper, didn't get in Monday's paper. Because Monday was technically my deadline. Didn't get in Monday's paper, got in Tuesday's paper, you couldn't read it in Tuesday's paper. So I had to call again. And then I got in Wednesday's paper, so. Okay, I got free publication.
Wanted to add very often.
So, yeah, basically, yeah, it has to be, that's, that's, century code says we have to publish the whole thing in its entirety. And then, then the question will be asked exactly as I stated it with the date that it was published. If, if we decide to put it on, that's how it works, so. And the decision has to be, I, I, my thought was, and I think the thought of the committee was to give the commission plenty of time to look it over. Uh, between this meeting and the next, come up if there's any questions, any things like that, and, and at, at this level, we can still make changes, make, do whatever we'd like to do with the document, I, I believe. That's how my understanding is, so. But we can, uh, deal with it in the next meeting then.
Just a comment, there's a, a motion. I think that what you had over at the public hearing. That document, I don't, you know, that's what people are gonna be like, that's what I'm trying to say.
Oh, for, for teaching people what it's about, yes, yes.
I mean, this, you know where it's gonna go if they have to do that, so.
No, but legally, we have to, we have to print it as a whole. That and, and our lawyer over here, you know, was pretty.
I don't know what you're saying, I mean, if we're gonna sell this to the people, they're gonna get it, so we can. And then settle, I guess.
Yeah, and, and, uh, I'm sure you guys have probably all seen that Lucas had that one-page summary of this is what it does, this is what it doesn't do, yeah, just. Well, no, that's the original information sheet, but we had a one-page summary, that basically, this is what it does, this is what it doesn't do, and make your mind up. So that's basically, I hate to say, how you're gonna sell it, but how we're gonna inform the public on what it can, cannot do.
I'll say sell it, but.
Yeah. So that's where we're at.
It may be a tall order.
Yeah, it might be, and that's, in all honesty, that's fine. I don't, I don't mind if it's a tall order, it's. I think we have a good document, we do good work, it's just a matter of, do the people think they're valuing it or not?
Yeah, and, and that's something that I would like to commend you guys on, is the work that that committee has done. Um, very well done and a lot of work was put into it, so thank you and Lucas and the rest of the board members on that.
I didn't do anything, I just showed up. Everyone else deserves a credit, I just showed up. It was a lot of fun, actually, a lot of good discussion, a lot of back and forth, and I think, I mean, for a good document, our, our document in terms of the charter is. Not drastically different from a lot in the state, but it's got some pretty important differences from a lot of the other ones, like, uh, for instance, you were at the, at the public hearing. We put very strict. Things on if, you know, if you ask for a sales tax, how the sales tax is enacted and all those, considering how the other counties were a lot more wide open. I mean, we wanted it very restrictive, so if you wanted to use that for a tax, it's gotta be. First, you know, it's gotta be very restrictive. Yeah, that's what, I think that's what we're talking about. So there's a lot of little things like that that I think you did good work on, so. You can, you'll make us copies of, uh, that little info sheet, the kind of the one pager. Uh, I better wait for her to come back, she's gotta make most of this work and all that stuff.
It's twenty years I've been here, I think this is the third goal of this.
Yeah, and I think this is probably the furthest it's made. You know? And, and I'm, I'm not saying positive or negative, obviously, I think everybody knows I have a positive view of it because I think it's, there's value to it, but. You know, it's an interesting way of doing things.
What kind of pushback is the public giving?
Excuse me?
Kind of kind of pushback has been getting from the public on that?
I don't know if I've heard a lot of pushback other than just comments on questioning how it functions and what it does and what it doesn't do. You know, there's, there's like anything up there, there's misinformation on what it can and what it cannot. Was it on the other document?
I don't remember, you can go to another big one. This looks familiar.
I, I've had questions from a few different people in public on what, you know, can it do this? Well, no, it can't do anything close to it. The, where you heard it could be, you know, so, there's just a lot of that information informing the public what it can and cannot do that needs to be done there, which that's with anything. Okay. You all set up?
Yep.
Fantastic, alright, uh, special permit approval.
Move over.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the special permit for all license, I believe, for all class serving. Uh, figure the special, so now, in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. And the motion carries, approval of beer liquor, two different license name changes for the Webster block.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve signatures on both those name changes, further discussion? Seeing no, in favor, vote by saying aye.
Alright. Just so you know, the name, the change was due to financing. Something that they were at Inc. and now they're changing it to a L L C.
Uh, okay.
So incorporated versus what it lagged already, did it change something, incorporation was?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Approval of the twenty nineteen preliminary budgets, and obviously the sheet's in front of us, the numbers have changed a little bit.
So it should be ten million one hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and ninety cents.
One ninety cents. Pretty ninety cents.
Yeah.
Ten, one fifty-six, seventy-one, ninety-four.
Yep.
Okay, uh, in relation to, I missed two questions, in relation to last year, where are we gonna be at on mills levy? I know you can't answer that perfectly because we're still waiting for utilities. The state had some utility problems. What was your question? Well, where are we gonna be at this year in relation to last year on local mills levy? Because, you know, the ten million dollars isn't, it's the total budget number, but that's with the federal pass-throughs and the highway aid and everything else stuck in there.
Well, you know, Kevin, Kevin took quite a few mills off last year, which
really helped.
Those are gonna have to go back on.
Well, yeah, not really back on, but yeah, they're not saving.
I mean, you know, it's not gonna be zero, but, you know.
Okay.
I would, I mean I mean, I kind of started figuring things, but I, I mean you know, I started working and then I got in-depth and then you get an email that says your utilities are wrong and it just scratches everything that you just
Screws all your, no, we don't.
spent the last three days working on, so I
Yeah, that's pushing me.
Mm-hmm, so I just pushed it all away and.
But you have better room than you should be in.
So, I don't know, I just, I said I'm a little on vacation. But, you know.
Just, uh, how many mill over want to go up, Candy?
Well, I think we all need from cutting social services.
Candy, would it be possible to you know, th- this line here, would it be possible to put routine on next week? So we can see the differences? Do you have that in the, the book? In the writing, see?
Well, and this is just what gets published, right?
This is the two. We're still three hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars less than left.
Yeah.
Less than nine.
Three twenty-two.
Dollars.
Well, we're less than nine, this is ten point, ten point nine two nine.
Yeah.
We're ten point one five six, so we're actually one seven hundred thousand dollars lower, but that number doesn't you know, again, that's federal pass-through and all the different things, so our logo might be up.
Two million of that was spoilt back.
Yeah.
So that's the problem, is, is locally, we're gonna be, and we don't have any of that yet.
I agree.
Yeah, and the only other question I would have is, ev- every year we budget, and I think I mentioned this to you before, is, we talk about budgeting and then we're kinda like well, where are we gonna be at next year versus this year type of thing, and is it, you know, I, I think it would be really beneficial to look at fund balances for carryover, so we know where we're at, where we're at right here. And I know that's not easy, cause you gotta track it to your end.
You got more months coming up to pay it down.
Yeah, I know, but I mean.
Well, and I've kind of based it off of you know, like our liability reports.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I always kind of look at it, you know, if we, if we spend every dollar that we're budgeting from now to the end of the year for the liability report, then where are our fund balances, we got? Just to kind of have a ballpark figure, cause you know in, in all the research I've done, generally speaking, municipalities generally wanna keep about two months carryover, so about seventeen percent is kind of the number we should shoot for possibly, if you're comfortable with that.
Cool there, wow.
Yeah, so, you know, so, and then we, yeah. Yeah, and we don't ever, we've never looked at that fund balance number as part of the budget procedure, I just think it would be beneficial to see, you know, so we can go, okay, well, we're gonna if we buy it out of this, or if we, if we spend more, but we don't, you know, like we did with the highway funds last year, where's that gonna put our fund balance in the next year? And, you know, it gives us a little bit of an inkling of I mean, we can do it, but it's, it's all kind of blurry in the numbers. I guess I could sit down and do it myself, but.
Oh, we'd be ten million six oh six.
Hmm, okay, you did that.
I know.
The math is wrong.
Oh, you know, this is such a big delta later.
Oh, okay, so that number you gave us first is wrong, huh?
Yeah, cause I think I only did fifty thousand, I think.
Oh, so it's, it's ten million six oh six, seven eleven ninety-four?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's where the three hundred dollars difference should have come out with this time, okay.
So now, do you get a different figure there?
Yeah, yeah.
You're either ten one sixteen, you're ten one.
Yep, it's six oh six.
Ten six oh six. That makes sense.
That'll work pretty close to that.
Okay.
No, we're still three twenty-two.
Okay. Well, just things to think about, I mean, cause I'm sure, you know, once you get the utilities and you'll put together that old spreadsheet telling us where the mills are and all that fun stuff, so.
And I mean, right now, you know, right now, a mill is at fifty-eight thousand three sixty-nine, but
Yeah.
that's not.
Where, where it actually comes on that.
The, the other, the other.
They keep changing it.
The other question I, was think, that just pops in my head, how much, so that, that, that taxation thing that we're pushed up a month for because of, that we have, does that have to go to everybody? Or is that just off of a certain percentage change over last year's taxes? It's everybody?
Okay. I believe everybody that has a taxation, I think, I think she went a hundred dollars and more.
Okay, so, yeah, a little.
You know, because there's ones that are like five, seven.
Yeah, yeah, it's less.
Yeah, the little ones, but it was.
So everybody's gonna get one of those forms in the next month after the preliminary approval?
Um, yeah, well, yeah, come on.
Yeah, and how many people are gonna come in with, uh, the?
Yeah, I was gonna say, what's the over under on the checks we get?
She's doing it on colored paper, like yellowish, white paper, with a watermark
Oh.
in, in the middle.
But we're still gonna get people coming in, I guarantee we will.
They still get people coming in.
So.
Okay. Well, that was part of my question, is that if it's a percentage change or something, you know? Could we avoid sending no more than we have to type of thing here, save ourselves some dollars, but if everybody gets it, it doesn't matter where, preliminary that, I guess, so. Okay.
So without, uh, a whole lot of other debate, then go ahead and make the motion to approve the preliminary budget on ten million six oh six, seven eleven ninety-four.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Did I?
We have a motion and we have a second to approve the preliminary twenty nineteen budget, and is is that, is this also approving putting it in the paper at the same time with the preliminary number?
Well, and they changed that too, so there's, you know, three emails on that, so.
So.
So what, Candy?
Usually, usually this gets published and they changed they changed like the format of it and so I'm gonna have to call the state and find out.
Okay, so we're just, we're just, we're basically approving the number right now?
This is just.
I was gonna say, because the hearing is until the third of October, so publishing it now would not absolutely do nothing, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I just left the form the same for right now because
That's fine.
They send out one email and you probably should wait until you get like the third or fourth email to do something, you can stay.
And we're usually, I figure, ten million six oh six, I think, yeah.
Ten six oh six, seven eleven ninety-four. Okay.
And that's, that everything that's gonna happen.
Yeah, we can't go any over that.
Okay. So.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries, we feel a little much disapproved. Okay. Visitors and delegations. Okay. Portfolios. Jeff, you wanna start?
Sure. Uh, you know, I guess we've heard from Extension, you know, with the retirement of Brenda and, and all the good things happening there up in that office, um you know, courts, carries continue to be extremely busy, sure is busy. Um and the fair and all the other extra boards are, are all doing good, I guess, you know, it's, uh we got a very good representation of Ramsey County down at the state fair.
Yeah, I saw that on all the Facebook pictures, you know, really, looked like we had some kids that did really well.
We had some kids that did really well, so we have our state four H, uh, shotgun competition this weekend down in Bismarck. Um, we only have nineteen kids going down there to compete. Uh, and we, maybe in the first year that we won't bring home the state championship for Ramsey County. Um and we'll have to see one other company show up, but we don't have a, a great deal of experience going down there with this issue. But kids, kids tend to surprise me, so I'm not gonna count us out yet.
Okay.
I think that's about all I have. Water, uh, water issues, um hey, you know, I think everybody heard that the East End outlet is shut off. Um, some erosion, I haven't been down there to see what actually eroded, you know, they did a lot of repair on that over the, this spring and last winter kind of thing, they had some issues with the outfall structure on the Tomacouli. Um, I can't imagine it not being the same problem that they, they fixed, but because it hasn't been running at full capacity. So you wouldn't assume that there'd be a, a great deal of erosion out there, but um, but I continue to get, uh calls, emails, um personal visits of, when are you shutting the pumps down? The lake's getting too low. Um but, you know, so we still have to continue with that. Uh, I think one of the big concerns right now is that River Valley Water Supply Project. Um the wealth that they're proposing on that is along Highway two hundred and if that bypasses um, coming into Cheyenne prior to Devil's Lake any hopes of ever bringing outside water in when we need it are gonna be greatly reduced. Um, so that's gonna be a tremendous concern. I think a lot of people have expressed that, Mayor Johnson being on the State Water Commission has tried to get them to look at different alternatives, study different alternatives. Um, and, and I know he's frustrated with their, their lack of enthusiasm doing so. Um, but they have a meeting down in Bismarck on Thursday, they're state water commissioner, and they may uh, decide on that, I know it's not an action item on their agenda, but, uh, you know, they're scheduled to make a presentation to that committee. So, we'll keep everybody informed on that.
Yeah, it's gonna be something to watch forward.
Yeah, yeah.
The question is whether they're able to money.
Well, it, it's a huge, huge expense and.
Are they talking somewhere in the neighborhood of two billion?
You, you, you know, wh- whenever I bring up.
Is it a road trade or what?
No, no, they're talking right now, they were putting wells.
Wells underneath, you know, and then bringing the water eased from Audubon to Ashtricula through a pipeline, um.
Yeah, they'll dump it.
Oh, that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, you know, somewhere over a billion dollars on that. You know, anytime I, I bring up the, the possibility of stabilizing Devil's Lake and, you know oh, shh, you don't wanna try to get water in while you're trying to get water out, you look like a crazy person. I'm like, that's exactly what Cass County Park was doing with their Farble diversion and their Red River Valley Water Supply Project. They have, they have two, two major flood control projects and, and this going on at the same time, and they're both well over two billion dollars. You know, so they have a tremendous amount of, of expenditure that they're looking at, at getting from both local, state and federal dollars on one, the birding floodwater, and then two, bringing water in. Um, you know, no different than what we would be looking at here. Um, you know, it, it's all about bringing a balance too, and you know, so I don't know how crazy you need to, to get, but, you know Gary, do you see mugshot crazy or?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it, it, wa- water is definitely a frustrating, frustrating endeavor, but, um, it always has been, always will be, I think.
I agree. Alright, that all?
That's it, Mark?
Um, you know, we've already talked about fair and all that stuff, so that's pretty much done, and the LAC, we've kind of pretty much discussed that since the last meeting, so that's pretty quiet.
Sure, sweet.
Yeah. Yeah.
All you see, we talked to, talked about social services, we're gonna get to talk about budget. Everything going well?
Pretty quick. Uh, I don't have a whole lot to add, we talked about Home Rule, that was disbanded now since we're done with the work, um County Housing Authority, we didn't meet last month, um For Devil's Lake, we had an interesting meeting, uh, first of August, we had a, a full board meeting actually out at Camp Crafton. Uh, meeting with, um Lee Norden, I think he's in his part, quickly, he's the business, he, he used to be in the garden, he was a commander in the garden, now he's a, uh business developments for unmanned aerial systems out of the, the Adjutant General's office through the governor's office. And we talked a lot about, uh, how For Devil's Lake as an economic development arm can partner and work with Camp Crafton and their facilities to try to work on unmanned aerial system development in the area, since we're kind of in that corridor between the two air bases, and they're doing a lot of unmanned aerial stuff out of Camp Crafton, so it was an interesting meeting. Um other than that, For Devil's Lake is cranking right along with a new director, sees the work, making some uh, at least he's, he's wanting a new job, so that's a good, um social services. Yeah. Just budgeted and everything seems to be running pretty smoothly there. Trying to think of anything else.
Okay, I guess the other thing that, that I'd like to mention would be that, uh, chamber that activate downtown, meeting that tomorrow, um, in the Memorial Building, the one's at ten, I think, and the other one's at four.
Uh, fourth, four or four thirty, I think, or something like that.
Yeah, maybe four thirty. Um, but they're both, uh, you, you know, talking about that downtown, uh initiative, kind of that, uh how, when they brought that consultant, that John, that whole thing, yeah, some of the items that he had brought forth and something to revitalize downtown in our community, um that's gonna be over at the Memorial Building tomorrow, um, let's see, what else is there gonna bring up?
Okay, oh, well, we're, we, we, I don't know if you guys got the email, Northeast Time, we're gonna have a meeting on the twenty-second, which is a Wednesday evening. Uh, wasn't my first choice of date, but we're gonna have the group, uh, coming in, talking about opioid litigation lawsuit that's going on that some people, I'm sure you guys have seen. that's going on that some people, I'm sure you guys have seen, Burley County signed on to, Cass County's looking at signing on to. So I figured you might as well come in and just get the information from them. So, and that was the date that worked because they were already in-state, they're gonna be talking to the Grand Forks County Commission, I believe on the twenty-first, as well as the Grand Forks City Commission. So, it was a date that worked, so I know it's, I'm pretty aware of the logistics. But come in and learn, I guess. Other than that, I think they're gonna be in the future. That all?
That's it. Very good.